For meeting for Monday, July 13th, 2020. It is now 6:37, so we're getting started a little bit late, a little bit late. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Public participation.
Sarah Pillling, 29 Garrett Avenue. I want to give a shout out to the Willow's Park Preserve and especially to former Commissioner John Fisher, who put on a wonderful concert last night. Two of the commissioners were there. It was warm, but there was a wonderful breeze. The Willow's Park Preserve had put out flags 10 feet apart, so people were more than social distancing. Everybody was in masks. And it just is, turns out, it's a wonderful venue for a concert. There were people sitting down below the road if they didn't want to hike the hill, or they were up towards the top of the hill. It was a, it was a really, really wonderful event. I think the next one is the 9th of August. Is that correct? And people should try to come because it was a great way to be together, but be separate and to hear some fabulous music. Thank you.
I'm George Brosman. I represent West Wayne Ventures LLC, which are the owners of the old post office annex property behind the Wayne post office. I'm here tonight on behalf of my clients. They have filed a zoning hearing board application seeking some relief to redevelop that property, which has stood vacant for many years. I understand that the commissioners discussed this at a prior meeting earlier in June. We weren't aware that the matter was going to be discussed. And I watched the video. I didn't see a formal vote, but it was the sense of the board, that the board would send the solicitor to oppose the application. Last week, we made a fairly complete presentation to the Community Development Subcommittee of the Board chaired by Commissioner Booker. And one other commissioner, Commissioner Mulrooney, was there. I'm asking to have the opportunity to ask the Board to reconsider whether they would send the solicitor to oppose the application. We do think it has a lot of merit and will be a shot in the arm to the property and downtown Wayne. I understand some of you may have watched the video from last week. We made a fairly full presentation. I don't know if that's correct. If you have not, we would ask for the opportunity to give you a presentation. And I did see on your agenda that there's a topic, Reports of Standing Committees, so I didn't know if that would be brought up later as a report of the Community Development Committee meeting that was held last week, and whether we would have an opportunity to discuss your position on our application. Of course, you would see this again in land development if it proceeds. And if you did watch the video, I think we made most of our key points, but we did forget to mention one of the benefits of this project is, we heard that in some other parts of Wayne, at the evening times, dinnertimes, and on the weekends, that's when parking is the most short in Wayne. Obviously, with restaurants, that being their peak times, one of the benefit of our project, which is for an office use, is that they will not have a high parking demand, and it's a complimentary use in that regard. So we really don't think we're going to have any negative impact on parking, and we will have a lot of positive impacts. So I'm asking that you reconsider sending opposition and/or allow us to make a presentation to the Board so you have all of the information. Thank you.
Seeing no additional public comments, I will move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda that any commissioner would like to pull?
I would like to pull for informational purposes only, item J.
Okay. Anybody else? Are there any items that staff would like to pull? Are there any items that member of the public would pull? Hearing none. Moving to item J, Resolution Number 2020-76, 147 Conestoga Road Sewer Facility Planning Module. I'm assuming, Mr. Norcini, that that is you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is, the commissioners have seen these many times before. So this gentleman's been through land development for the single lot at 147 Conestoga. He's required to obtain sewer sewage capacity, done through a sewage facilities planning module. So he's completed all the various sections, got his various approvals. The last step is for the Board of Commissioners. If it so pleases them is to approve that resolution, and then it will go off to DEP.
Anything unusual about? It's one, one property, right?
That's correct, Commissioner. It's just one. So if you remember, they came in, he was in before you a few months ago. There's an existing house, and there's going to be a new house, so he needs one equivalent dwelling unit.
Thank you.
Is there any staff comment? Hearing none. Is there any public comment? I will call the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion passes with five, two commissioners not present. For the remainder of the consent agenda, I will move with the remainder of the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
I will call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion passes, five to nothing. Moving to committee reports. Item 3A, Resolution Number 2020-73, Villanova University Seer Building, Preliminary Final Approval for Land Development.
I think I can probably take that. Commissioner Locken, just to introduce this. The resolution of approval that's in front of the Board is for preliminary final land development. This has been through the process and recommended for approval by the Township and the County Planning Commission. The conditions of preliminary final land development are set forth in the resolution. Compliance with the consultant review letters, compliance with other applicable ordinances. I have made one edit to paragraph four of the resolution by adding some additional language to that. Paragraph four, right now, says, "The applicant shall execute development and financial security agreements in a form and manner to be approved by the township engineer and township solicitor." And then I added the following language, "And the new building shall be restricted to engineering, education, and research by a note on the record plan." This was something that had come up after the caucus meeting, which I had intended to put in this resolution before it got posted, but it fell through the cracks and it didn't get in there. So that basically reaffirms what the plans would be, is that the building's going to be used for educational engineering, couldn't be utilized for any other purpose without coming back to the Board. I did speak with Mr. Canelia, and I'm not sure he has authority, I don't think he does, to agree to that, but I think it's a relatively innocuous condition. So I've added that, and then you have a series of modifications or waivers to subdivision ordinance provisions, which are proposed to be improved, subject to a capital contribution of $15,000 to a township fund that would be dedicated to capital improvements and emergency services within the township. So I have also spoken to Mr. Canelia about that. I don't believe Villanova has an objection to any of that. And really don't have anything else to add, but I think this is ready for approval at this point with that edit to paragraph four of the resolution.
Thank you. Nick Canelia, representing the applicant. What John said there is, is correct. We had received a copy of the proposed resolution. I actually had checked online probably last week. We are in agreement with the first three items. The fourth item is something that I first became aware of approximately 5:00 this evening, and I just don't have the authority to agree to that. I'm not really certain what the purpose of the added language is in that this is an engineering building. If there was any change of use, it would have to come back here anyway. So I'm really not certain what the reason for the additional language would be, and what uses are trying to be prevented at this location. It's being built as a lab and engineering and academic building, and that's going to be the use. Again, I'm not certain if the concern is if it's going to be dormitories, an indoor facility, you know, obviously, you know, that's not what will happen here. But again, I just don't have authority to agree to additional condition. This has to be agreed to by the university administration.
John, can you tell me what page in our packet you're referring to, when you, with the language you just referred to, that you added?
Rich, let me send to you the revised resolution. Because it wouldn't be in the packet.
Okay, all right.
Because the packet was posted on Wednesday. But I just sent it to you. It's in addition to paragraph four. It would require a note that would reinforce what's already going to be on the record plan, the use of the building, the parking cabs and everything else. But the note on the plan would reinforce that, so there's no question if something would change down the road. And I agree with Mr. Canelia. I mean, I, I think the plan itself is restrictive, but it doesn't hurt to add additional notes on plan so that the building wouldn't be changed down the road without another approval from this Board.
John, will you send that to me, too?
And just so I understand, the concept is Villanova has said that this is going to be an engineering building. Part of what's baked into this application is that it will not clandestinely become dorms for a massively increased enrollment size next year, which frankly, I don't have a lot of concerns about. Villanova's enrollment has been pretty static for a long time now, and I don't think that they're looking to. But in an abundance of caution, you're saying that we would say, if you wanted to change it into anything other than engineering, come back and check in first?
Correct. And I think they would have to do that with or without an extra note on the plan, because if it was changed to, let's say, dormitories or some other type, there'd be a different parking calculation, I think. So, but, you know, having a note on a plan that says this plan is engineering, research, you know, education, just reinforces what's already on the plan. I don't think there's a note that says that. I don't think it is a detriment to Villanova, and I apologize, Nick, for the late addition to this, but it's, it's something that I knew about last week and, and was not in the resolution, and it was pointed out to me. So it's just an additional note to reinforce what the building's going to be used for.
And I guess one, one thing I mentioned to John, I believe his language may have resolved it, I'll just ask for clarification, is, for example, say that there's a political science class in there. I don't think that's against, you know, what we're proposing here, and, you know, particularly everything being interdisciplinary now. I wouldn't be surprised if, you know, political science someday has an engineering component to it, and the way.
That was going to be my next question. Is there, is there a, first question would be for John, and then the next would be for the Board, I guess. So my question is, would it defeat the ends of your amendment to, instead of just saying it must be for engineering, say that it can be for educational, non-residential purposes or something? So if it wasn't engineering, you could do science, or if it wasn't science, you could do math?
Non-commercial in there as well?
Yeah, that's fine. Non-commercial.
I mean, it can be educational, but the issue is, 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 this was obviously me talking to John. In the past, there's been a ton of drift with whatever they say. And I don't want to get in it, but we both know you can take the restaurant, 80 seats to 218 seats. There's drift. So it needs to be clearly spelt out in this resolution. And, and, you know, as far as I'm concerned, Nick, I get that you're not good with the last minute cramming, but, you know, welcome to my world in Ward 7, when you did that with the lights. So the Board can vote on it, the Board can approve it, and if you opt not to do it, then so be it.
I think, I think the issue that Nick's in is that he doesn't have the time to run it up the flagpole.
Doesn't matter. The Board can, the Board can still vote on this, and then Villanova can opt if they still want to go through with the agreement.
But if we're talking about engineering, education, and research, you, you, that's the limit.
Then if it's not a big deal, then that's fine.
That's the limit. I don't think you need to add, and not commercial or not residential.
Sure. You had an hour and a half to get on the phone.
But you've already got education, engineering, and it sounds like your question then is answered. It can be science, it can be math, it can be.
Any kind of, any kind of class.
Well, that's, that's not the way I read it. It says, "Engineering, education, and research." It doesn't say, "Engineering, comma, education," and it says, "Engineering, education." So it's specific. And this approval was always a specific approval, which was, "We have no new students coming," and Villanova has been increasing their graduate and other studies, maybe not undergraduate. But the whole premise is that there is no new people, it's just a consolidation of existing operations. That's the premise of this building, and even the expansion of the parking lot, supposedly it's not necessary, for whatever reason, but they're doing, it's necessary. So I, I think this is very important. I think this is a very good change, John. This was, this is a good thing to put in there, and it's protective. And why should it be any problem to agree to? I wouldn't see why it would be a problem to agree to. And I, I think it's a good change, and it makes clear the intention of the parties. This building is only a part, is only a consolidation, it's not an expansion, an increase, and the, the use wouldn't, shouldn't change. And if it does, then this is not, this is not valid. What we don't want to have is a situation where the use changes and nobody knows about it, which is always what happens. If the use would change, and then it could be a year, or two, or three years later, and people say, "Wait, that's not right." And how, how would any of us know? We wouldn't necessarily know. So this gives us an additional place, way to enforce that.
Commissioner Booker makes a great point. It's not a small building. It's 38,000 square feet. I mean, it's the size of like a Bed Bath &amp; Beyond. It's not small. So I, I am actually going to vote for this, but, you know, if, if, if this number four is an N, I won't vote for it, so.
But let's, let's make sure we're clear, Rich, because it's engineering, comma, education, and research is the way it should read.
Well, it's not what I, the highlight of the language I'm looking at doesn't have any comma in there at all.
Then there needs to be a comma, because you don't want to be arguing that you can have engineering classes, but not some other type of class.
Why not? It's an engineering building, it's a consolidation for engineering. That's what we said.
They may have a engineer, political science class that's part of the curriculum.
That doesn't sound likely. I never knew any poli sci majors that would ever be doing any engineering classes, but...
You know, the legal profession now is heavily involved in civil engineering, as I can attest to.
They have a law school building, they have other buildings for those classes.
Also, I just, I don't recall that there was any indication that this was only a consolidation. I heard in their presentation that this is a building that's going to put them into another level and attract high-quality engineering students, and, you know, it's not just to take the classes that exist and put them into one building. It's to move Villanova into a realm of, you know, engineering education with a fine building and lab spaces that aren't in basements and that sort of thing, which I think is positive. We want to attract those types of students to the area, and hopefully, they stay and they contribute to the community. So I'm just hearing two people saying that there's some promise out here that, you know, there will never be an extra student because they have an engineering building, and I don't think that's what we want to be saying, because I think it is going to attract different students and other students. It just, I don't think it's going to increase their student population in any other way, except it might just bring more engineering students in.
I, I would disagree on that. 38,000 square feet could definitely change their enrollment, not now. And what you're hearing from me isn't that, I don't, you know, it's, we're not, I don't care if they, you know, have great students or not. That's, that's not what this is about. This is about what was said, this is about, or what wasn't said, and this is about what has happened in the past. And I can only go by what has happened in the past. There's been change, there's been drift, and this addresses it. So why not address the drift? And, and go, vote on it, and if Villanova opts not to accept it, then fine. But we shouldn't be beholden for whatever they want to do. You need to look out for the residents. And 38,000 square feet is not a small building. And the fact that Nick didn't know about it until, as I said, until 5 today, welcome to my world.
Well, I, I don't know why it's, it's so concerning for Attorney Canelia. What's your concern?
Rich, one, I don't have the authority to agree to it. Two, as we explained, there's already safeguards in this resolution, providing that the use changes, that we would have to come back before the township to get approvals.
Well, then why can't we get it approved? Right? So you're arguing both cases.
Why approve it? I mean, it's, it's, my concern, this is my concern, again, I have not gotten feedback from the administration, is, is this restricting the ability for Villanova to use this building for academic purposes? And the intent is to use it for academic purposes. They can't refit this for a dormitory, they can't refit this for a restaurant. This is all about classroom space.
Well, this is for people, some like constituents, Hilldale and Ashwood Road, this is directly across, this is going to affect the constituents in my ward, and the traffic, it was a big issue. The point of it was, this was a consolidation, new facilities, and a consolidation and upgrade of facilities. We have, you know, Sprowl Road, Route 320, is very, very densely populated with traffic, and it's a very difficult area. In addition, Lower Marion is going to be opening up a school just down the road from this location, which could also add to even more of the congestion. As it is today, that, that light at Lancaster and Route 320 backs up all the way up the hill. So this, this is an area that's very congested, and the point was, we aren't expanding the enrollment, we're not expanding the program, it's a consolidation and upgrade. And I think that's a very important element, and I don't know why this would be problematic, especially if there already are controls that say the same thing. It's saying the same thing that it already says, so I don't even see why anyone would disagree, even if you have to go to the, who was it, the Mons, the president? Who was the head of the Augustinians in charge?
Rich, one thing.
Father Dottie.
The only reason that we're adding parking is because the Rattner ordinance says we have to add parking.
Okay, good.
We wouldn't be adding it otherwise. And there is no increase in traffic, it's the same people, as we said, it's a consolidation. So I don't, traffic is just a non-issue in my mind on this. You're not increasing traffic, and I believe staff feels the same way about it.
Yeah, we've talked about that, yeah. We'll bring it up again. But, but again, this, this ensures everybody's on the same page, so I understand.
Let's start by cleaning up the record. It sounds like there's a missing comma, which is going to make this ambiguous. I'm going to now move to amend to insert the comma so it's clear that whether we have it this way or not, what's going to be in front of us is for, is it, "Engineering, comma, education, comma, and research?" Okay. So you could then, 50 years from now, it is not the engineering building, it's the math and science building, but it's still not to be used as a restaurant, or a dorm, or whatever else. So is there a second on the motion to amend?
A second.
We'll call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
No, opposed?
All opposed, say nay. I heard one.
And also, you don't need a comma before the end.
Yes, you do. That's an Oxford comma.
I'll vote aye.
Okay. So motion passes, six to one, with Commissioner Booker opposed. Now, is there any additional Commissioner comment?
Yes, I have a comment.
You've already spoken for a while, Rich. Is there any other Commissioner who has not yet had anything to say?
I have a comment on the stuff that's the old stuff, not the, this is the new piece.
Is there any other Commissioner who has something to say? Hearing none. Rich, briefly, final remarks on this.
First of all, we should not be doing a preliminary final. There's no reason to do, combine both. It shouldn't, that should not be a waiver that we grant. We don't need, you know, the plan size, I, I don't know why it's a struggle to use 24 by 36, but I wouldn't grant that waiver either. Man-made features, again, it's important to see all of this, so I would not grant that waiver. Transportation impact study is very important. We should have the transportation impact study. It covers the university as well as the township. If there is more traffic, if the traffic patterns change, we should document that. We should not leave that to chance. And then we also should not approve a parking lot that they're totally tearing down and rebuilding at a 6% slope. It's too steep. It will be icy. People could get hurt. It's not good planning. 3% is the requirement, we should not let, if they reuse the existing parking lot, would be one thing, but they're not. They're tearing it up and rebuilding it. We should not let that be rebuilt at 6%. And also, where did we come up with $15,000? Is this now the price to buy an approval of waivers at Rattner Township, $15,000? Is that what we're setting? Who came up with that, and where did it come from?
Here's, here's the way this works, Rich.
And it sounds like quid pro quo, so why is that not the case?
No, it's, when you have under a subdivision land development ordinance, every plan that comes in front of every township, there's always waivers, usually involves substantial improvement, sometimes it doesn't.
It's not always waivers.
Almost always, there's some kind of a waiver. Some of them are minor, like the plan size and the 500 feet, but other ones, when there's improvements or studies that are asked to be waived, the township has the ability to negotiate a fee in lieu of that, so that that, instead of spending the time and the money, the applicant then can contribute that money to the township to use to do other improvements unrelated to this project. It happens all the time. Every municipality and every county negotiates some kind of a fee in lieu, if it's appropriate. Sometimes it's not appropriate. Sometimes it's appropriate to deny the waivers. In this case, Steve and I looked at it. Steve did a calculation as to the traffic impact fee, and also the preliminary final, and calculated about savings of $15,000, probably a little bit more, but I think between the two of us, we felt that that was a fair fee in lieu of going through and doing these other things that they've asked for. So that's, you know, we haven't formalized this, we've done this in the past. You should formalize this going forward, because you have developers that are asking for waivers or modifications, is what it's called in the MPC, of SADA provisions all the time. So that's the concept. It's something that the courts have okayed. The Commonwealth Court says it's normal negotiations between a developer and a municipality for these types of fees. There is no, you can call it whatever you want, quid pro quo, or put whatever spin you want on it, Rich, but it's something that the township has the ability to negotiate.
Understood, but here's my spin.
And it's not an approval of the overall plan, it's an approval or a denial of the waivers.
Okay. So the, the waiver is not... Okay, so the, the waiver is not going to afford the township and my constituents an ability to analyze the traffic changes at Lancaster Avenue and 320, or at County Line Road and, and 320, or at Hilldale or Ashwood. All of that information should be analyzed so that the constituents have it, and allowing an applicant to get modifications for a fee of fifteen thousand dollars is in opposite to good governance. It's, if we, if we make a deal for whatever cash gift or whatever it is, it should not be premised on something as blatant as this. You get the waivers, give us fifteen thousand dollars, especially when it's something that we need. I, I just disagree with this in, at the highest order, and fifteen thousand dollars, I would much rather have the traffic study, and, so, I'm opposed to this, and I'm opposed to this type of quid pro quo.
Is there any staff comment? Is there any public comment? Calling the vote, all in favor of the resolution as amended, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion passes five to two. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on-
So what happens if they don't agree to the language that's in the resolution? They have to come back?
They can resubmit and come back, they can take an appeal.
They can resubmit, they can file an appeal. You know, it's going to be up to Villanova to decide whether or not they can live with that condition.
I would ask that we get formal notice of whatever they decide as soon as we hear.
I don't know what formal notice means, but okay.
A, a letter, email, or other communication from the Villanova stating that they accept the terms and condition as approved, or that they do not? I'd like to see that within two weeks, something like that?
Yeah, I don't know that we can make them do that.
Thirty days to decide what they want to do, on a resolution.
Fine, within thirty days, then.
Moving on to three B, resolution number 2020-72, 117 Radnor Chester Road, final minor land development.
Do you want me to do another presentation, like I did last time?
It's up to you, the floor is yours.
All right. Can we get the overhead? My lawyer, who's working for somebody else tonight, just gave me a good idea. I'm okay with the draft resolution you've prepared. If you have any comments that you'd like me to answer, I'm willing to answer them.
And Mr. President, this resolution has the usual conditions, compliance with the consultant review letters, compliance with all other ordinances, and development of financial security agreements. There are actually three waivers on here. One has to do with the five hundred feet man-made features, one has to do with the eighty-foot right-of-way, and the third one has, has to do with improvements along the state highway. Which, Steve, what would the improvements be along the state highway? Solicitor, it's road widening. It would entail road widening to the limit of the right-of-way there, it would add extra roadway.
And how much additional right-of-way? I mean, right now, the right-of-way is, is it eighty feet? That's a state highway, is it eighty feet, forty feet from the center of the road? No, it's forty.
So, the commissioners have the ability to request additional right-of-way up to a certain amount, and that's what that waiver request is from, is regarding. Let me grab this real quick.
We went through, can I speak?
Sure.
Yeah, we went through that last time we met, and basically, all of Radnor Chester Road from beginning to end is, is forty, and some subdivisions I worked on in the past still have the forty feet, they weren't asked to have an extent, a widening of the right-of-way. It would really not make too much sense to widen it for this short period of like a hundred and some feet, and then even to pave it would be more ridiculous. And it's also a state road, it's a Penn dot road.
So it's an eight, it would be an eighty-foot total right-of-way, which would be forty-foot from center line.
Yeah, right now, it's a forty.
Is there any commissioner comments or questions?
Yes, yes. Go ahead. Go ahead, you go first.
Yeah, I have been close to this project with folks in the neighborhood from the beginning. Specifically, my concern is with the waiver for section 255-27-dot-C, which is the forty-eight foot cartway along with the curve in the sidewalk. My concern on this is the limits that it puts on the township in terms of the possible and future sidewalk or walkway from Lancaster Avenue down to the proposed extension of the Radnor Trail. That, that's the main one, but beyond that, my concern, as is the residents in that neighborhood from the beginning, has been a very small, well, not a small lot, but the, the pie-shaped lot and the, the concern of trying to squeeze three homes on, on that property has always been a concern. So, I, I'm a no on this, I've been a no on this one from the beginning, it's not keeping it with the neighborhood, but specifically this evening, my concern is with the limits that it puts in terms of what the township is able to do in terms of access and right-of-way for the extension of the Radnor Trail on the east side of Radnor Chester.
Yeah, Mr. Endriely, last, I mean, last time I made a presentation, I showed that my lots are like fifty percent larger than the lots across the street, and, you know, the minimum there is ten thousand, we're fifteen thousand square feet, so that whole strip along Route 30 is zoned R3. You know, we almost could get four lots on there, but that would be too tight. But, you know, I, I have a graph that shows exactly what all the lots across the street are, and they're all ten, twelve thousand square feet, my lots are fifteen thousand square feet. So, Planning Commission approved it, Shade Tree Commission approved it. And, you know, I just, I just can't imagine putting sidewalks or widening roads on that street. We presented a video last time that showed from beginning to end that, you know, it pretty much, you know, you've got narrow bridges, it's, I just can't see that road ever being widened. And I think the widening was really about limiting the density, but I can tell you equivocally that the, we did a plan with the eighty-foot right-of-way, and I showed it to the board last, last time I was in here, and I can still get three lots on there. I don't want to go through that whole process again, but I will if I have to. So we, we can still get three lots with the eighty-foot.
And I guess my overriding concern, as is the neighbors from the beginning, from the beginning, is you can get three lots in there, it's not in keeping with the neighborhood, it is a pie-shaped lot. From the beginning, the neighbors have said that they are absolutely fine with two, with two lots on there, both in terms of the, the access onto Radnor Chester, the sightlines onto Radnor Chester, the congestion, and, and the speed that's in there. They, they feel that it is overdevelopment, and they have from the start, and they've been very clear about it.
Yeah, except for one neighbor, the lady that owns the property, she-
Correct, but, and I've met with her twice. She hasn't lived in that property since the, the water damage and the fire, I think it's been six years since that happened, maybe longer. She hasn't lived there since then, it's been abandoned. And, and again, the, the neighbor's concern is, is not the development of that, they welcome that. What they don't welcome is the overdevelopment of that, and the crowding onto that lot, which is pie-shaped of three homes.
Yeah.
With one driveway access for all three homes.
It's in your ordinance, I, you know, I don't want to argue with you, I mean, I just, I just try to meet the ordinances that you have, and, you know, it would be nice to have a house under a million dollars for sale on Radnor Township, that's kind of what we were trying to do. I've met with the neighbors many times myself, so, sorry you don't like it.
I also-
That, that comment's kind of insulting. It's an insulting comment, please.
I've also-
I'm sincerely sorry you didn't like it, I mean, I don't, I didn't mean that as fresh.
I, I've also heard from constituents in the area, and I have from forty people objecting to, the neighbors objecting to this, and believe that the right-of-way should be maintained at eighty feet, and we, we shouldn't grant the waiver. And I have also heard the same concern with the, the driveway. So one driveway for three lots, I think is problematic, and as we said at the last meeting, if you have a by-right plan, that would be the better way to propose this, but coming for waivers, not requesting not to widen the street, which as you acknowledge is a busy street, very thin, very twisty, and it's very close to the trail, and it's, so a lot of people are coming and visiting in there, so the three houses, I think, are problematic, I agree with that, but if you can do it, you can do it, and I, God bless you, you know, you're, it's your property, you can do with it as you please, but if you're asking for a waiver, my, my sense is, the neighbors are, are, do have a problem with what we have here, and that my view, my view is that we should not grant the waiver, we should require the full right-of-way, and, and not the common driveway.
Is there any additional commissioner comment?
Let me ask a couple of questions. So how's this with stormwater? Is that like down by the damion, or, I don't know, I know when you turn on to Radnor Chester across from the Sinclair Building, I mean, that is like a steep drop. How far is that from where you're planning on building?
When you turn on to Radnor Chester from where?
From Lancaster?
I don't think there's a steep, if the road comes down-
Well, no, but if you look, so if, if you're, if you turn on to Radnor Chester from thirty, is it on your left, there's like a, looks like a drainage or something, you know? It's an east side, it drops off from there, and you're talking, the property that we're talking about at 117 South Radnor Chester is, is what, another hundred and fifty yards? Hundred yards down there on the left? So, so that's, that's number one, I mean, we have issues of flooding constantly, stormwater, I, it may not, you may meet the requirements, and then sewer, these would be three new houses. Would we be able to get sewer hookup, or are we, let me talk to, let me ask that to the engineer?
So, Mr. Bentley would go through the same process that we just did for the, the planning module for 147 Conestoga?
We have two new houses, there's an existing house.
Right, so he would need two equivalent dwelling units for the parcel. He has one, he would need two more.
So you're, so, and, and this is why I find it insulting, so if you had two houses, how much would you try to sell them for?
I don't know, I've, I've got quite a bit of cost invested this-
Well, I'm, I'm just talking about the price, because you're saying that, you know, you want to, you want to cram in three houses and say it's under a million dollars, so it's like saying, well, I'll have, you know, three houses at nine hundred thousand, or two houses at, you know, a million. So obviously, you know, one is a two-point-seven million dollar buy, if you get your price, and one is two million, so, yeah, that, that comment, just from my standpoint, it definitely rubbed me the wrong way.
I, I was being serious. I'm sorry, I, you know, I just, you know, we did the best we could, we met all the ordinances, we changed the plan like three times based on your staff's comments. The water that we generate, we take care of on-site, we went through a whole litany of, of questions and probing with the Planning Commission. You know, I, I, and as far as the economics go, I don't, I don't think it works for two houses.
Okay, all right, I, I just, I heard what the neighbor said, and I received an email from them, this is Commissioner Endriely's ward. I know some of them personally, so I'll support, I'll support the commissioner and do what he says. Excuse me.
Yeah, I'm, I'm also going to vote against granting waivers. I understand you have a by-right plan, and when, when you have opposition to this plan, and you need waivers for it, and it, and the current neighbors that are living there are, seem to be unanimous in their opposition, I appreciate Commissioner Endriely reaching out to me and having a discussion about this. What I'd like to see is for the, the builder, the commissioner, and the neighbors to get together and have a discussion. In my experience, that seems to help smooth a lot of this out, and we can get through some of these, these concerns that the residents have, and hopefully we'll see you back here.
And Commissioner, we would welcome that with Mr. Bentley. I've met with the neighbors in, in various people's homes, you know, standing room only and living rooms, you know, we welcome that, or here at the Township Building, on neutral ground.
I've tried to meet with the neighbors like five times, and they were going to get a lawyer, and we could never, ever get them to meet, so, you know, they, they want two houses or one house, basically the economics of what-
They've been very clear with me about two houses. From the beginning, they're, they are absolutely fine with two houses on this property. Three is overcrowding in terms of the lot.
But I meet all the zoning requirements, I mean-
I understand.
Could I say one thing?
Sure, sure.
I've been involved for Tom on this, I attended the Planning Commission, I could not attend the caucus last week. A couple of points on the waivers that are being sought, they were recommended by the Planning Commission, I believe also by the Shade Tree Commission. One of the reasons was if you widened that road, there would be a lot of tree destruction. Also, with regard to the right-of-way, the case, the cases in the Commonwealth are quite clear, I believe, that where a development is not causing the need for the additional right-of-way, a township, even if it's in the ordinance, that you can require a larger right-of-way, has to pay for that right-of-way. So if you deny that waiver, Mr. Bentley could come back with his plan that he has showed that will destroy the trees, and the township would have to pay just compensation for a right-of-way that's on a Penn dot road that you don't need to widen. There was a traffic study submitted and reviewed by your consultants, and there were no issues raised with the single driveway. In fact, most municipalities are trying to force developers like Mr. Bentley to have a single driveway on a road like that that's busier. All the site distance issues were resolved with that driveway, so that's a good thing. So, we ask you to give careful consideration before you deny these waivers, which have been granted up and down the road into many similar projects, because there is a purpose here for them, and we showed at the Planning Commission, we believe we meet the standard for the waiver, because there are conditions on the property, the trees and slopes and things like that, and the Radnor Chester Road, so I ask you to not deny those waivers and to approve this plan subject to the resolution that has been drafted that's agreeable to Mr. Bentley.
Attorney Brosman, are you representing Mr. Bentley in this proceeding, or are you offering that as a, as a resident, or as, as an uninterested party?
I'm Mr. Bentley's attorney, yes, I'm representing him.
You're representing him?
Yes.
I just wanted to make that clear, I didn't understand.
We don't really have entries of appearances for these, it's... Is there any staff comment? Is there any public comment? Hearing none, I will call the vote, well, I guess first, yeah, I will call the vote, all in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. Nay. Resolution fails unanimously. Moving on to item 3C, ordinance number 2020-15, adoption, an ordinance approving a lease agreement between the Township of Radnor and the Sports Legends of Delaware County, Inc. I will so move, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any commissioner comment?
Yeah, I'll just say, I think it's great, I love it, it attracts a lot of people, and I'm happy we're doing it, so, I know Jim is not here, but it's a wonderful thing, and it's really kind of an honor to the Township that they want it here. the township that they want it here.
Not sure that attracting people is what we want right now, but later, when this is all done and COVID-19 is over, that'll be good. Is there any additional commissioner comment? Is there any staff comment? Is there any public comment? Call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Ordinance passes unanimously. Item 3D, ordinance number 2020-05, adoption, emergency response rapid entry systems. I will so move. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. We've talked about this a lot already. Is there any commissioner comment?
I'm opposed to having this be a requirement. It's already required by the fire code. We know, we shouldn't, we shouldn't expand this. It lends itself to abuse, if not now, in the future, and potential for abridging the right, the rights of certain people. So, I'm going to be opposed to requiring a key be provided to the government for these multi-family units.
I'll just say, and I know that we've talked about it ad nauseam, I think that it's a slippery slope when it comes to the Fourth Amendment, and it's just something that I'm not comfortable with.
And always my favor, my vote in favor of it. I've worked with these systems hands-on. I've seen them in operation, both with the police and with Radnor Fire Company. This is a very, very necessary emergency response tool. The safeguards are numerous in terms of access, and it has been proven for many years within the fire company and fire companies up and down the main line, and it is a very necessary tool.
And I would just ask Commissioner Enderly, and it already is required by the fire code, and we do have this requirement, and the fire officials can have these keys, but now we're expanding it to the police and also requiring updated notification, listings, and other governmental submissions. So, why is it, and I understand that it's necessary for fire, but why is it necessary to expand this to these other people and have more people have the keys?
One very simple reason, and that is 80% of the time, the police are first on-scene, whether it is a residential fire, whether it is a commercial building fire, whether it is a heart attack. I've responded to a couple of heart attack incidents in the, what is the apartments behind the Land Rover dealership, the high-end townhouses back there, where police have been on-scene first and are, in some cases, still buzzing to get in and waiting for us. Many of the police are trained, very well-trained in CPR. They're lifesavers, and we can pick up newspapers on a weekly basis and see where police are first in on the scene in some residences and commercial properties and are the first ones to pull victims out of hazardous situations.
Can I ask this solicitor, one, just one question? And Damian, the fire, and it's something, I commend everything, again, that you guys do. Fire is a non-governmental entity. Am I correct on that? You're not, you're not a government entity. You're funded by the government, but you're kind of like a private entity, so to speak, correct?
That's correct. Radnor Fire Company is independent.
So, for someone to have to turn over their keys, almost, I'm going to say, I don't want to say at random, but if fire ever became a business and someone said, oh, we're going to be a fire company, a private fire company, like there's a private ambulance company, they would have the keys too. I guess you'd have to give it, so, we're, I don't understand how we're going to decide which non-government entities are going to have access to social security numbers, money, personal records. And to me, you know, I know it's going to pass, I just want to get it on the record, it is just really a slippery slope to be handing keys of people's livelihoods, you know, locked up in a box that you could take a sledgehammer, knock it off, and a crowbar and pop into it. And I've cracked many safes in my business of buying storage lockers, and I can get into a safe in about 15, 20 minutes. Trust me, I can. I bet you I could get in there just as quickly. And I wouldn't keep my credit card in and my social security number in a lockbox outside my residential house to make business owners do it there is, it's a, it's Big Brother and big governments going way too far and stepping over its bounds. That's my piece. That's it, what I have to say.
So, Mr. President, I'm, I support the ordinance. Are we too late in the game to make an amendment to change?
So, this is adoption. Depending on what the amendment is, we might have to re-advertise. If you want to make the motion to amend, then we can look to the solicitor, and he'll tell us whether we need to re-advertise or not, and we'll take that into account when we vote to amend or not.
Well, I guess it's a discussion amongst my colleagues, and the one, the one part of this that I'm uncomfortable with are the daily fines, up to $1,000. If it's in the benefit of a, if it's being required and it's in the benefit of a store owner to, you know, give their keys to the fire department or the police department, you know, why are we fining them? Because if they don't give the information or they don't give the key, the result is, if there's a fire, they're going to have their windows broken, their doors broken, they're going to be paying anyway. So, I just don't see the need in fining them per day, up to $1,000.
I will second an amendment to strike the fine provision.
I haven't heard a motion for an amendment yet. I heard a question.
No, I'll move it. That sounds good.
Okay. And I heard a motion in a second. All in favor of the amendment to strike the fines portion of the ordinance as written?
Before we get to the vote-
I'm just going to ask John to quickly tell us, would that require re-advertising?
I don't think you'll need to re-advertise it, and I'm not sure, I mean, this ordinance contemplates that land developments are going to require this going forward. So, it'll be enforceable through the land development process, and I can't imagine that we would ever go to District Justice Court with any kind of a citation. But what I would suggest is you can either strike it or just reduce it down to $25. Eliminate the $1,000 cap.
Well, I've got a motion pending right now on amendment, and I don't want to do a lot of back and forth because we've gotten out of the habit of, which I like, gotten out of the habit of debating motions to amend. So, I'm just going to call the vote. All in favor of the motion to amend-
For zero, for $0.
For $0, striking it altogether, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, say nay. Nay. Motion fails four to three.
Let me just ask, Jack, then, is there, while we're speaking, is there something that the board, a number that the board could agree on and change it for that? If zero is too low and a thousand's too high, is there common ground to say $100 a day? I mean, I don't want to have to call a motion, but I mean, let's-
Can I just ask why? So, the, how do we arrive at the $1,000 to begin with? Sir?
I think most of the ordinances have a range. Usually, it's actually a little bit higher than 25 on the lower end. It's usually more like 100 up to 1,000. But those ordinances, the ones that you really need to find are the health, safety, and welfare ordinances, the property maintenance ordinances. This is, this is not that kind of an ordinance. So, I think it's just carried over, Lisa. The, you know, I don't think there was any analysis as to what the fine should be. I mean, you might have somebody who ignores the requirements, ignores the requirements if it's part of a land development, so I would keep some kind of a penalty in here. You know, I don't-
Well, the way it's written, it's up to $1,000, right?
Correct.
Yeah. So, it's already written in there that it can be lower.
Right.
Because it's up to $1,000. So, if you have somebody who is defiant and refusing, and it is determined that it's a safety issue and could be detrimental to the broader community, you can fine him more because of the behavior that you're encountering. Am I right?
Correct. And it's not going to be up to the township to do the fining, it's going to be the District Justice. And I can tell you that there's very few District Justices that ever fine anybody more than $100, no matter what the maximum is. Unless it's egregious, you've been back in front of the District Justice five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 times, it just doesn't happen. So, yeah, I mean, you have the range. It's up to 1,000. It's also every day, a violation would be a separate offense, which is pretty typical in these types of ordinances. But, you know, I'm not, the number to me doesn't mean a whole lot because you'll never get $1,000 a day, but there ought to be some kind of number in there to make some sense if you want to change it.
How would you guys feel about $25, not to exceed $25 for a first offense, 500 for a second, and 1,000 for a third and subsequent?
I think then we're getting into making a judgment before the, I would leave it up to the District Justice to determine.
Or we can lower, or just lower it to $500. The max is 500.
That's fine too.
And then that gives, then that gives the justice, you know, I guess, more reason for it to land at 100 or whatever.
I heard a request for compromise from a member of this board. I am looking to jump on that with both hands, so I'm happy to find a compromise. Is $500 good?
I'll move for $500.
I will second the proposed amendment. I will call the vote. All in favor-
One question though. It's 500 per day? So, if it's a continuing violation, it goes 30 days, it's-
Up to, up to 500 a day. It could be a dollar a day, or it could be 500 a day, depending on what the District Justice thinks is appropriate.
It just won't be 1,000.
But it'll be $500 a day, which is still too high.
It could be up to $500.
Per diem, but, it's a per diem, Rich, that, I'm telling you, it just doesn't happen. I mean, there's a lot of cases where it should happen, but at the District Justice Court level, you'll never get fines like that, especially on this type of an ordinance. I mean, we've been, we've been there. It's frustrating.
It doesn't frustrate, but again, if we know it's not going to be enforced, why would we make it $500 a day? If you're going to make it something, make it 25.
But if it's 25-
This is a small infraction. This, as was pointed out, if somebody wants to do it, they're taking the chance on, for themselves or their property.
So, there's a motion in a second. We don't really debate the motions to amend, so I'm going to call the vote. All in favor to amend to 500, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion passes five to one with Commissioner Farhi off the dais. So, we have an amended ordinance. Is there any additional commissioner comment on the amended ordinance? Hearing none, I'll send it to the staff. Is there a staff comment? Hearing none, any public comment?
Baron Gemmer-Southwayne, I, wasn't it explicit as I could have been last time? In the exclusions for single-family and two-family homes, it's qualified by owner-occupied. I would like to see an amendment to strike the owner-occupied portion, both because it's not known at SALDO application, and even if this were to get outside of the SALDO process, I don't think it should be in there either. So, hopefully that's explicit enough this time.
And that's my bad for forgetting, Baron. Yes, I was going to go ahead and amend and just to remove owner-occupied, because it could be a rental property and the owner doesn't live there or something like that.
I'm, I'm missing then exactly what the issue was. We wanted to have owner-occupied removed from the single or the duplex, but this is for three or more homes, right? So, Baron or Lisa, if you can explain to me what the, exactly what the issue is, because I'm missing it again.
There is an exclusion for single-family and two-family dwellings, but only owner-occupied. So, not only is that not necessarily known at SALDO time if somebody's doing single-family homes, but it can also change over time, and should this ever get outside the SALDO process where something else triggers it, we don't want necessarily to have to impose this on a regular single-family or even two-family dwellings, which again, can change back and forth whether they're owner-occupied or not.
But again, my understanding, and maybe somebody can clarify, is that this provision does not apply to single or duplex residences.
Because of the exclusion that's in there.
Because of the exclusion that's in there.
Yes, which is qualified by owner-occupied.
Owner-occupied one- and two-family dwellings.
So, it does apply to one- and two-family dwellings that are not owner-occupied?
Correct.
If that was, again, again, this is triggered by SALDO, so that would have to be known at the time of SALDO application, which is unlikely anyway. When a developer comes in here and is developing single-family homes, he doesn't know if a buyer is going to rent it versus live there.
So, if we, if we strike that, then that makes it more inclusive. It puts it, makes it, requires it for whether you live there or not.
No, no, it's excluding those, and now it exclude all one- and two-family dwellings across the board regardless of whether they're rentals or owner-occupied. Right now, it only excludes the owner-occupied ones.
So, it'll say shall not apply to one- and two-family dwellings as opposed to shall not apply to owner-occupied one- and two-family dwellings.
Agree with that?
Is that a second that I heard?
Is it possible, can we-
Second that.
Okay.
Yeah, we got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Amendment passes unanimously.
Can we table this? I would just say to table this so we can talk about finding middle ground when it comes to what the fine is. I mean, it's obviously-
We found you a little-
Oh, all right. Thank you. Still too high.
So, is there any staff comment on the newly amended ordinance? Is there any public comment on the newly amended ordinance?
Sheriff Tilling in Garrett Avenue, this may not be appropriate, but I would like the township, the fire company, and the police to look at this as an option for private homes. As an elderly person living alone with my family, many, many states away, I would feel more comfortable if I knew that there was some way for the police or the fire to get into my home if I was disabled. So, I, looking at it as a way to, there's a whole cadre of us who live alone, and I think it might be a wise move for the township, not necessarily as a requirement, but an offer to give further comfort to people who live alone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anything that would preclude a person just to choose to have one of these?
No, there's many homeowners, and for whatever reason, they tend to be in, in pretty wealthy areas with large homes. You know, they, they have these, there's been many homes that have these Knox boxes. When you call an emergency number, they'll let you know where it is.
So, where does, if someone does get fined, where does the fine go to? The township?
Okay.
Just to the general fund?
Okay, I'm going to call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion passes five to two. Moving on to item 3E, ordinance number 2020-14, adoption, amending section 5-70, civil service provisions of chapter eight of the Radnor Township rules and regulations. I will so move. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any commissioner comment?
I have a lot of comments on this, and I sent an email to Joe just a few minutes ago because I just got his memo, I guess at 5:00, and tried to respond before the meeting, but wasn't able to do that. I would like a recitation, again, of exactly what we're trying to accomplish here by making this change and how we, how this accomplishes that goal, and whether this board is able to provide goals, non-binding goals, to the police department.
The proposed change to the civil service rules has nothing to do with diversifying the police department. It is intended to expand the pool of candidates. What it does is it changes the status, the current rules specify that the app, in order to apply for jobs, a police officer here, you needed to have- order to apply for jobs, a police officer here, you needed to have graduated the academy. The change is to say you can apply if you are currently admitted in the academy. It's a six-month program, so if you're admitted, you can apply, and before we can make you a job offer, you have to have graduated. So it expands the pool. There was significant discussion at the last meeting that addressed diversifying the police department. The change is completely unrelated to that issue. Today's email to first Commissioner Larkin and then was redistributed to the other commissioners drew a distinction. What I tried to point out at last month's meeting is that both federal and state discrimination laws prohibit an employer, whether it's a public employer or a private employer, from taking race or gender into account when making a hiring decision. And the, the discussion last time drifted into that sphere. The, the intent of my email was to point out that the restrictions on having race or gender be a factor in making a hiring decision do not apply to recruitment. And what did not occur to me during the discussions, and I didn't raise it at the last meeting, but it, it has since sort of, you know, being able, given a chance to sort of kick this around and, and think about it. With recruitment, you can be as, as diverse, not diverse, you know, going after as many different candidates as you want. One of the benefits of going into schools and recruiting students that are currently enrolled is they're all in one location at the same time. The senior management with the police department, based my conversations with Superintendent Flanagan, is that the, there's members of the department with an excellent relationship with two local MOPAC schools, police academies, such that they can go in, they can get information on who the student, who the students are in that particular class, they can appear during the school year and do targeted recruiting. I mean, if I could, you know, the, the example that was raised last time was recruiting law students during, during the summer to, to see whether you like them or not. It, it puts senior management at the police department in a position to pursue minority students and say, hey, stop by Radnor. We, we would love if you would apply here and go through our civil service process, and hopefully we can offer you a job. Do you have any questions? You know, come by, we'll give you a tour of the department. All of those kinds of reach-out opportunities, which it didn't occur to me at the time, but they exist, and that is sort of in the game plan for the, the superintendent and Kevin Gallagher as they pursue candidates to apply for jobs at, at this police department.
Why is, why is it desirable to increase the pool of candidates? And what is the authority of this board to set goals for the police? Is this board able to set a goal for the police, or are we not allowed, as you indicated last time, that we, last meeting, that you seemed to indicate that we were not allowed legally to, to set a non-binding goal for our, our police or our township administration?
Let's, with respect to non-binding goals in an affirmative action plan, one, they're un-
I didn't say, I didn't say affirmative action plan.
Well, but that's, you can't, you can't talk about setting goals and pretend you're not talking about affirmative action.
Any goal.
Well, if the goal's to hire three people, the goal's to hire three people.
So we can set that.
And this discussion of diversifying the police department is irrelevant to the notion of we're going to hire three police officers a year. The, if, but my understanding is that your email to me, the conversation from last month's meeting, it's tied to diversifying this police department.
It's, it's not a tie to affirmative action or an affirmative action order. It is tied, is tied to broadening our pool of candidates so that we get highly qualified candidates of a diverse nature, always highly qualified, no, without, without regard for race, color, creed, or gender, the highest qualified.
You've modeled a couple things and sort of over, woven them together in a way that doesn't make sense.
Okay, elucidate, elucidate me.
Let, let me, pardon?
Please elucidate me.
I, I will. First, if you're talking about recruitment, this department has gone above and beyond. There are ads, there's, they reach out to the NAACP, they reach out to minority churches. There is a phenomenal outreach group to widen the pool of candidates, one. That was a time where you needed to find somebody who had gone and graduated from the academy and was still, but, but not locked in and working somewhere. So there, there was that issue. By now going to the academies and tapping the students, and chances are 60, 70% don't have a job yet, you're going to be a year or two ahead of the curve because very few people consider police academy students. They, they only want graduates. So everybody else is going to catch up to you in a couple years, but there's a window of time where you can now approach the students and do targeted recruitment, and that is fine. That is, there, there are, there are no issues with that. But goals for recruiting are irrelevant. I, you know, it's just, how many applications are you collecting? The critical issue is getting bodies on the force and to, to first address only hiring the best candidates. There, the civil service process by definition, it, it's inherent in the concept, is a competitive process whereby there's a graded written exam, there's a graded oral exam, there's a background test, there's a physical agility test, there's a polygraph test, so that, and people at the end of the day are ranked on a list, one through whatever. A problem that this department has faced, as well as every department in the area, is you used to get 100-plus candidates, and now that's shrinking, 20, 30, 40. The other issue is that, you know, whether, whether it's a generational thing, the, the failure rate for background tests is, or the, the background investigation is very high these days. The, the, the drug use, the bad behavior that occurred in somebody's 20s or late teens that would be disqualifying because you want the best candidates, it's, it's just rampant at a level that did not occur in the past. So you've got an opportunity to screen people. Your standards have not changed in terms of who gets ranked on a list, and it is not unusual, after five, six, seven people are selected off a list, there may still be some remaining names, but they are not the best and the brightest, and so there's a decision to sort of let that list die and start a new process of hiring new people.
Just one more. If, if you're recruiting, how do you know that those recruits who have not yet graduated will be among the top three, which is a requirement that we choose from the top three of the list? If they're, if they're not, if those recruits are not part of the top three, then how did you broaden anything? You still are back to the same pool that you had before.
Well, I, I, I'm not sure you understand, so let me go through it again slower.
Yes, very slow for me. I don't, I don't understand, Joe. So, so if you're recruiting somebody that's not in the top three, how does he, how does he get, make it through to be hired?
50 people show up, take the written exam. All of a sudden, it, people get screened out, don't pass the oral, whatever, flunked the background check, can't pass the physical agility test. You've got a list of 35, and they are ranked one through 35, okay? The list of three is, the board desire, the, the chief says, we want to hire two, two new officers. You know, Smith and Jones retired. We, we've got two openings, we're slotted for, for 40 slots, we're down to 38, we want to hire two new people. You look at that, the, the list of 35 names, and under the statute as well as your civil service rules, the top three names are certified, and the first spot you open, you look at A, B, and C, and you pick A. My concerns about the discussion last week is that if you skip number one, you skip number two, and you pick number three, who, and, and one and two are white guys, and three is not a white guy, one and two arguably, based on the flavor of the discussion last week, would argue, hey, race or gender or religion was a factor in why you skipped over me and I was number one on the list. And that was a discussion that I was hoping to avoid. But the, the list of three is the top three names on the list. So you look at one, two, and three, you take number three. The next opening that in theory occurs two minutes later, you're looking at one, two, and four, and you pick one of those. You pick number one. So two and four go back on the list. The next time you're looking at an opening, you're looking at two, four, and five. So getting into the top three, there's only going to be three people. You have 35 folks that have gone through the process, you're only going to have, you can only look at three candidates at a time. So that's when I talk about the list of three. And you're right that you could, they could go to the Delaware County Community College, have 15 of those students apply, and none of them make it to the top three. But to balance that with your concern that you only hire the best and the brightest, so they didn't turn in, they, they didn't make it into the top three, but you're still hiring from one, two, or three.
Exactly, so-
We've been on this for about 15 minutes now.
So that, again, that's my question is I-
Are there any other commissioners who have questions about this?
Let me just ask a quick question. In, Chief, in 2018, we have like five new, Chief, we have like five new hires. Am I correct? Okay. I think there were five, because I remember it was a pretty tragic night when they were sworn in.
That, that is correct.
Okay. So out of those five, how many were, what were their backgrounds? Were they right out of the academy, or I think a bunch of them came from Villanova, Villanova's police force? Am I correct on that?
Yes, one, one of the hires did come from there. I would have to pull their files. I'm not prepared to answer what their backgrounds are right now. I mean, I can get you that information very easily.
Yeah, I mean, because, because that's important. And then 2019, how many, you know, new officers did we swear in? Like three?
So last, that, that last group hiring was the last time we hired. That's why we're doing this.
Oh, I thought that we hired like three more after that, no? Could swear that we did, that there was another round. No?
I, I would just have to pull the file just to make sure I have the dates correct.
Because, just because I, I mean, just, and maybe my numbers are off. I would like to see, before I would vote on this, and I'm happy to table this again, I want to see where these last groups came from, because if, if, you know, if they're all coming from Villanova's police force, and I think that there were multiple people that, 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 or multiple officers that came from there, then maybe this is a good thing. But I think that we need numbers and, and backgrounds, at least for the board, to decide if this is going to be productive and useful. My guess is that it probably will be, but I would just like to see, I know it's not a huge sample, but a sample of the last couple of years, I think, is definitely good just to, to kind of sort things out, at least on, on a real-life basis.
Sean, I think-
I wouldn't, I wouldn't motion to, to table this until, until we have more information.
One second.
Well, I think we're not going to see that any of them came straight from the academy, because that wasn't allowed.
So let me pause, because there's a motion to table. All in favor of tabling, say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. Nay. Motion fails for lack of majority.
So I, that's okay. I was out of order. I guess my, my question to you, I mean, I would love to see the data, you know, data's always a good thing, but, but I think what you're not going to find is that none of them came out right, straight from the academy or recruited before they graduated, and that's what this ordinance is.
No, but I mean, hold on, but you're saying that you, you voted against this?
But you are talking when I am talking, so it's hard for you to hear what I'm saying. So I guess you asking for those numbers in the context of this ordinance is not making sense to me, because the ordinance is whether or not we can recruit before they graduate. Since we've never been allowed to do that, the data is going to show you that none of them came straight from, out of the, before they graduated from the academy, and that's what this is trying to do, to broaden the pool that way. So I guess I'm curious to what point you're making about checking out the backgrounds of the last, you know, five or eight folks hired, because they were all already officers who had already graduated.
Now, now, can I speak? Okay, well, so if data's always good, then I would think that you'd want to be for this. This is just one more, one more piece of information in the toolbox, and, and that's, that's what I think that we, that we need. I don't know if we're, I want to know how many were new recruits. I want to know how many were not new recruits, and how many came from Villanova, how many came from TE or Philadelphia, et cetera. The more data we have, we can actually see if this is going to work, and then we can kind of measure our expectations to see how well it's going to work. So having that data and having that knowledge is an important step, a first step to actually see, when you put this into motion, you know, what, what are, you have a hypothesis and what we expect our, our results to be, but just to have something with no expectations, I don't think that helps anybody. We're just passing something to pass something, and I don't necessarily know that, you know, what, what our expectations are.
I think our expectations are that we can expand the amount of people that we can look at and potentially consider as candidates.
Correct.
And what is wrong with that?
Absolutely not, and, and I am for it. I just want to know that we are going to wind up expanding where we're, where we're grabbing people from. As opposed to that we're not still just hiring from the same five or six places.
And we don't even know where we're hiring from right now, so that makes sense. Plus, if we do expand this and they're well below in the list, if they're 10 or below, it'll be so long before they get picked. It, it really hasn't expanded our ability to hire. So that's what I'm, I think is a problem for me.
Can, can I ask, so Chief, is, this is also being recommended by the civil service group, our committee?
Yes, Commissioner Barowski, the civil service committee has approved this. We, we took this to them, and it's based on statistical increasing the pool to give us many opportunities. The one thing I can tell you is that we have information on the current candidate pool. Retired Corporal Gallagher is sitting next to me. We have people from several different states, and that's why we advertise in the Enquirer. This statistical approach, whatever your position is on improving for this round of hiring, which has been postponed twice because of COVID-19, one of the current, I have many concerns about, you know, keeping delay. We want to give as many opportunities and take our, our pool from 70 to 100. I'm making up numbers because we don't know what the final would be, so that we have as much opportunity to get in those numbers, the best qualified police officers for Radnor Township. If we keep postponing or putting it back, obviously we can always have a test, just like if three people left. like if three people left, we'd still have to have a test later on. But we have postponed it, and many police departments are getting in line. We are gauged right up with those police academies, where we hope to take advantage of being right on time, as far as the changes of COVID. The other problem with COVID is, police academies are predictably going to be at 50% occupancy, I'm guessing, due to, they fall under county or state guidelines for education, what a college does, because they're usually college-run. So we're going to see a decrease in candidates, I believe, in the next couple of years because of COVID, until hopefully we bounce back to some new normal. So I just wanted to share that input of where we're at.
And Chief, would you mind, not everyone may be familiar with the Civil Service Commission. Can you just, just, how they interact, and what they do, what they're responsible for, so why, you know, they would be here to be experts. If they're making this recommendation along with you, I would trust them as the experts in this. So could you just, just very briefly, I'm sorry?
Well, as, as, hopefully everybody's aware, but they're, they're citizens from our communities who are appointed, they sit on the Civil Service Board, where we approach them, they monitor all of the hiring. It's really hiring and promotions, I'm sure the attorney will jump in, but in a brief capsule, they monitor all that, they stay on top of all the initiatives. I believe they represent the community in the best interest of the township. They are not attached to the police department. We make recommendations to them. Everything they do is posted in the paper. We go through that. The township administrative staff assists them, even the police doesn't write the letters and other thing for them, and then they take actions. If they do not approve it, then it would be denied, it wouldn't even come before the Board of Commissioners. This was obviously approved, and here we are today. I hope that answers it in a quick way.
It does, and a lot of them have very long tenures, don't they, on the commission? So they know what they're talking about. All right, thank you very much.
Is there any additional Commissioner comment?
I would just point out, Chris, that a lot of police forces are facing a lot of strife right now, because there's a big move, I don't know if you heard about this, but there's a lot of people that are out there that are actually trying to get smaller and, and have less, spend less money on police. So isn't that going to be, isn't there going to be less of a, don't you think that that'll have some effect on the police pool, or do you don't think that that'll have any effect? We'll still need more police officers?
So I, I agree with what you're saying, but with that, and there may be changes, definitely, based on some of the things going on, but I would also say that most departments are behind with their hiring. So the answer is long-term in a five-year plan, potentially, they may be reduced, but people are still catching up from many different reasons, including a COVID delay.
Is there any staff comment? Is there any public comment? I will call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion passes five to one.
No.
I didn't hear. Oh, six to one, sorry, thank you. Moving on to item 3F, Resolution Number 2020-74, awarding the 2020 Superpave Resurfacing Project to Allen Myers LP. I will so move. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any Commissioner comment? Hearing none, is there any staff comment? Hearing none, is there any public comment? I will call the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. Item 3G, Resolution Number 2020-71, Roberts Road Culvert, authorizing the payment of change order number one, additional gas line location work, number two, powder coating of guiderail and concrete coloring, and three, cost of accelerated work schedule to loftus construction in the amount of $35,049.25. I will so move. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any Commissioner comment?
I just have a question on the, on item three, for the accelerated work schedule, and the, the reason in the packet was to avoid the start of school. Do, do we have any information that school is starting?
I don't, Commissioner. That, this goes back to when the project started, and it was our intent. We felt that, as the different phases progressed, that school would be starting in some fashion. Now, I don't know how school will be starting, I don't know if they've even put that out there, or they've figured it out yet. So for number three, if it so pleases the board to award that specific item, they're set to be finished by September 4th, Labor Day. If we do not award item number three, then they would be done approximately September 24th. It's about a three-week difference.
And Steve, I-
Does, does the change in cost here bring it over budget?
No, the project is, is within budget at this point, even with the change orders and inspections.
And it's all coming from the stormwater? This is a stormwater project, correct?
That's correct, correct, Chris, Commissioner Borowski.
And Steve, just going back to item number three, so it's $13,000 for three weeks?
Correct.
Is there any staff comment?
I would just say, why, until we know the school's going to start, why don't we just keep the regular, original schedule?
And that's fine. So when we lost this time to the gas main, I did ask the contractor what it would be to bring this back to schedule, so I could go to the board and the manager with that. Again, it's totally your pleasure, whether you wish to award that. We were targeting Labor Day, again, for schools, but there is one other construction item that is tagged to this. So we cannot start the lighting project under the Conestoga Tunnel until this is done. Originally, that was scheduled for mid to late August, but because the detour for this project uses the Conestoga Road Tunnel, so until this project's done, we cannot start that lighting project.
Can I ask a question? So if, if we don't award this, the township saves $36,000?
Well, there's three. I, I think there is discretion to numbers one and three. I would request the board strongly consider 1A and 2.
How much is that? I don't have it in front of me.
So 1A is $5,203.26, 2 is $16,936.67, and number 2, which is the coloring of the concrete and the powder coating of the guiderail, came from discussions with residents. So I would very much request the board seriously consider that.
But if, if we don't do it, the township would, and we go, as is, the township would save $21,000?
So Steve, what's the total cost of this project? I'm looking at-
Well, now, hold on, Lisa, Lisa, please, I just, I want to get, I want to get that answer first.
So can I just ask this question?
Well, I, I mean, I asked him a question, I'm waiting for an answer. I mean, I don't, it's feel like you're cutting me off, it's just a-
I'm sorry, what was your question, Commissioner?
If we don't, if, if we don't make these changes, and, and we, and we, we keep the original schedule, will the township save approximately $21,000?
$35,000.
The township will save $35,000. And, and how much time, how much time are we looking at?
It's three weeks.
Three weeks, so it's three weeks or $35,000?
Oh, it's not three weeks for $35,000.
So there's three separate change orders here.
I'm just saying, I'm asking him, Lisa.
So there's three separate change orders. Change order number one was required when we encountered a gas line, and they had to do additional work. That's $5,203.26.
Okay.
That was required to be done. Change order number two, which is $16,936.67, is to powder coat the guiderail and color the concrete, and this was brought forth by residents who requested that. Change order number three, solely, is to deal with the accelerated schedule. So roughly, a three-week savings in time, it's $12,909.32. So I, I would ask you to look at them, not in the aggregate, but each.
So, so then going back, the first one for 5,200, which is a gas main they have to do?
That is correct.
Okay, so that, so how long is that going to take?
That's done.
That's done, terrific. And powder coating for 17,000, I'm going to round that up.
Yes.
Okay, how long does that take?
That's within the schedule, so it's all part of the schedule. Whether you accelerate the schedule or not, that's all going to be part of it.
So that doesn't change anything?
No.
Okay, so if we don't powder coat it, the township doesn't save $17,000?
If you-
I'm, I'm sorry, pardon me, if we don't powder, if we don't, if we don't change the timing, it's still got to get powder coated?
Right, that was a request of the residents, so it doesn't have to be what that was-
So, so we're just dealing with three weeks and $12,000?
Almost 13, 12,909.32.
Okay, now, Lisa.
So I'm looking at the information, Steve, that you provided us in the packet, and the initial cost of this was $550,000. We originally budgeted 759,000 out of the stormwater fee, so we're roughly, I don't know, 200,000 under budget right now?
That's correct.
And then we would add the 35, so subtract that from, say, 200.
It's probably about, will be about over 50 inspections when we're done.
Okay, thank you.
I, I mean, and, and I appreciate that you're under budget, but just because you're under budget doesn't mean that you would, that you should just say, well, because we're under budget, we can be a little bit less under budget. So that's kind of the question that I have. And no, I'm not particularly versed in this. That's, that's on me, and that's why I'm asking these questions, so that's something that, so it's basically going to be $12,000 for three weeks. That's kind of where I'm at. Steve, is that a fair, is that a fair assumption?
Yes, it's 12,909.32, to accelerate the schedule from the Friday before Labor Day, or the Monday after Labor Day, versus September 24th.
Okay, so, so for $13,000, over the course of a budgeted $750,000 project, that is now under 600,000 total.
Yes, sir.
We have the potential of, for $13,000, avoiding any interruption to traffic flow for school buses, should the eventuality that kids go back to school.
That's correct, sir.
Thank you.
And could I just add, so this, I don't know if everyone's aware, Sean, I know you are, because it's not too far from your ward where this is, but this, this, this project certainly was very long in coming. I think it was definitely something that had been out there in the ether for a really long time, and finally, it became an emergency situation, where basically the culvert was, I think, Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, about to crumble, and that would have completely taken the road out.
And we had barricades there, so people wouldn't drive over.
Barricades, yeah, so it was, it was definitely a significant project, and it basically is right in front of two homes there, right on Roberts Road, and it is also, so Steve, can you just describe the, the detour? Because it's a pretty significant, when they're working, it's down to one lane, it's very significant, and Roberts Road is a pretty well-traveled road.
So the road is fully closed now, for the duration of the project. So it does not open at night, it is closed 24/7. That's for emergency services, that's for police, nobody can get through there at this time. So the detour is Roberts Road to Conestoga Road, through the tunnel that I mentioned, right, 320, and back down, or the other way that you're going. So it does affect emergency responders, and again, it will push back our project for the lighting, which is also another road closure on Conestoga Road, roughly three weeks.
Thank you, Steve.
So let me, and, and this does affect Ward 7, so making Garrett Ave-
And Ward 5.
And 5, well-
And Ward 4.
Okay. Well, it's going to affect Ward 7 in the sense of what the Conestoga, thank you. So making Garrett Avenue much more of a through street, which I don't particularly like, and you cannot make a left turn, heading out of Garrett Avenue, onto Lancaster, which, I get, that's a problem. I think Rich, I think that we're pretty, if we can wait until we hear what the schools are going to do, I think we should do that. 13,000, yeah, I get it, in the budget of 700,000, it's not a lot. It is a lot when you look at what our mercantile taxes are going to be. So, and 13,000 is, you know, that's someone's job.
You realize it's coming out of the stormwater fund.
It doesn't matter, it's, it's all Radnor's money, I mean, you know, so-
It is money from the stormwater fee that goes to the stormwater fund that can only be used for stormwater projects.
Correct, unless there's a shortfall, and then we pull money from the general fund. So-
It's the stormwater fund, it's not the general fund.
Lisa, it's, it's township tax dollars. We are stewards of the tax dollars. And fees, pardon me, fees, fees, did you say fees, Jack?
Fees.
Yeah, fees, and steward of the, of the fees as well. But what happens when we're short our sewer fee? Where does that money come from? General fund, correct? Yeah. So it's the same thing with the, with the stormwater, that when we're short money, or, we have budgeted millions and millions and millions and millions of dollars in stormwater, and we obviously can't pay for all of them. If we did, we'd have to float a bond, and how would we pay that back?
Like, we're moving really far?
No, 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 we're not, because, no, 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 we're not, please let me finish.
But I want to make very clear, because you raised it, when we do these stormwater projects, the plan is, and always has been, that we would have to float a bond. The stormwater fund cannot, will not, nobody plans for the stormwater fund to pay for everything. A bond is in the cards when we do the big projects for stormwater. I just want to correct the record on that, otherwise, get back to-
One second, all right. Well, all I'm saying is that $13,000, I don't care what, what bank account it is, what account is, is $13,000, and in today's market, in today's economic environment, 13,000 is a fair amount of money, and we are steward to the township in the tax dollars and fees. And that's kind of crossing my mind right now, so I'm, I want to hear what everyone else has to say, and yes, I know this affects Ward 7.
That makes sense, the money's all the same, but it's, it's pretty, until we know the school's going to start, why would we pay to accelerate the, the schedule? We can always accelerate the schedule in August, if, if we know school's going to start, which I kind of doubt they're going to do it. So I think we're going to be okay with the three weeks and saving the 12,000.
I would only say, Rich, that it is halting another project that has been, we've been very anxious to see.
Stop halting it, just keeping the same schedule. Let's keep in the schedule we have right now.
No, but if we don't do this, it's holding up the lighting project in the tunnel at Conestoga, which is a very dangerous area that it's been on, you know, it's been in the plans to do, and we, because of the detouring, we can't do them both at once. So not accelerating this means we have to put off, doing the other one off of its schedule. So I feel like, for the small amount of money in this very large project, it's worth moving it forward, so that we can continue with other safety issues in that part of the township.
And my question, if, if we decide to delay, and then we decide to come back later in August and say, hey, accelerate it, will it cost us more to accelerate it?
I was going to get to that, Commissioner Borowski, you're right. So the contractor has, you know, a month and a half to make up this time. If, at the August meeting, we said, okay, accelerate your schedule, I don't know if he could, and if he did, it would be even more expensive, because it would be more shifts on more days, so I would say-
But more, but more of the work would be done, Steve. So we'd have a month more of the work to be done, so the more shifts would apply to a smaller piece of the project.
Well, what I'm saying is, instead of adding hours to each day, he might be adding, I don't know, two and a half shifts. I didn't, I didn't get into that with him, I just asked him for a price, so the board could make a decision regarding, and again, the, the guiding factors, where the possible start of schools in some fashion, emergency services being unable to use Roberts Road for longer, as well as the lighting project not being able to start until this one is complete.
Okay, is there any staff comment?
Well, Jack, Jack, I, so, so on the, on the lighting project, so if we accelerated this project and it wrapped up, what was your date, September 4th?
September 4th, weather permitting.
When, when would the lighting project start?
That first week, it would, it should start right after that.
And, and what would the work hours be for that project?
Conestoga Road will be closed at that location.
So it'll be impacting buses on Conestoga Road?
Correct.
So one of these projects is going to impact bus routes?
Again, not to get too deep, there's a lot of schools around Roberts Road, there's Barak, there's Sacred Heart, there's St. Aloysius-
Yeah, I know the area.
Ithan Elementary, so that was the thought, but it, it's at the pleasure of the board.
All right, well, you know, I'll, I'll offer a motion to amend the resolution and to strike item number three, just because this, you know, we don't know the schedule for the school.
Second.
This could save the township $13,000, which could be added on to future stormwater projects.
Can you read number three, because I don't have it in front of me?
Uh, number, item number three is the cost of accelerated work schedule to loftus construction, but I don't, the amount's 12,000 and change.
So there's a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All opposed, nay. Nay, motion fails for lack of majority. Is there any staff comment? Is there any public comment? I'll call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion passes. Was that 4 to 3 or 5 to 2?
Yeah, 5 to 2.
Okay, 5 to 2. Moving on to item 3H, Radnor Tap Trail, easement agreement approvals with Penn Medicine and Cornerstone Homeowners Association. I will so move.
Yeah.
Is there a second? Thank you. Commissioner, comment. I'll go first. Steve, I know I asked you this last time, but I got some commissioner questions anyway. I'm confirming that this has nothing to do with the Lenore Avenue proposed tap trail get-on?
That is correct, sir.
And we're in no different position with respect to that as we were when we last spoke about it?
Correct, it's to be removed.
Perfect.
I have a question about the tap trail, not this piece of it, but where it crosses beneath I-476 and goes off of the Penn site. What's the status of that piece of the trail? So right now, Penn, Penn's piece goes and just ends at their driveway that comes off of King of Precia Road, closest to Lancaster Avenue. What about the other side? What is that looking like?
So we got them to do that during the land development process, to add that piece of trail to go back there. But this portion, this portion of the trail, the tap trail, does not include that portion that goes under and would take you towards Villanove.
Understood. But what is the status of that piece, because we're building up to that, and then it's just ending in the grass?
That's the status of it. So we don't have, there's no further concrete plans for the remainder of the trail. It's out there, but has nothing to do with this project.
This Penn Medicine piece is Radnor Chester Road, the old site, Penn Medicine.
Right, understood. Just wanted to know about that other piece in spur. Actually, it's, it goes, this is the piece we're talking about from Lancaster Avenue, down King of Precia, up, and then to Radnor Chester, and then, and then down Radnor Chester.
This specific piece is from the bus garage where the Radnor Township property, Radnor Township School District property ends, up to Radnor Chester, past the existing, the old Penn Medicine driveway.
Is there any staff comment? Is there any public comment?
I do have a question. I was unable to meet with the Cornerstone neighbors when they did recently. Mr. Norrisine, I think you were there. Can you tell us-
Yes, ma'am.
Can you tell us their response and their, tell us what they think about this project?
So they did grant, they did, this is actually signed by Tim Krug, the chairman of the board of their HOA, and through the talks, it was determined, and reasonable and customary, requested a fence be put down along the trail, just like we have on the Radnor Trail. That's item 1, an opaque privacy fence. Item 2, 8 to 10, six-foot conifer, you know, evergreen trees to be planted. Sinage along the easement, every 100 feet stating private property, stay on trail. They don't want folks to go into their open space. Also saying trail is open thus to dawn, and if it's determined after consultation between the grantor and grantee that there is a, an issue with parking on Stone Creek Lean, which is pretty far from the trail, but if there was, that we would look into that. And what else did we have? The grantor, grantee will, if it grant, if it determined at the grantor's discretion, so after the trail's end, we have fence that goes to the bridge. If it was determined that there were folks veering off the trail onto their HOA property, we would install additional fence. And it's very reasonable and customary to install these fences along trails like this against residential areas.
Now, is there any staff comment? Public comment? Hearing none, I will call the vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, nay. Motion passes unanimously. 3I, Resolution Number 2020-78, establishing a policy for granting or denying modifications under the Radnor Township subdivision and land development ordinance and creating a capital improvement fund to accept fees and contributions. I will so move. Is there a second?
Second.
John, earlier today, you said that we should formalize a policy with respect to this. This sounds like our chance.
This is your opportunity, and just a little background, I mean, we call these, when it comes to a subdivision ordinance, we call them waivers, but the MPC codified this in 1988, and calls them modifications. So sometimes they're partial, waivers or modifications, sometimes they're not. But this, I think, provides an opportunity, when you have significant waivers, to negotiate funds to be set aside to do capital improvements, say, in a different part of the township. Particular developer may not want to be able to put a sidewalk in because of the, the lay of the land, the steepness of the slopes, and waiver modification is justified, but the value of that can be used somewhere else in the township, where you may want to use a sidewalk. This happens all the time, it's a back-and-forth negotiation. The way this would work is Steve and I would work to, when we get a waiver request, a modification request, and it's gotta be in writing, analyze it and make a recommendation to the board. Ultimately, it's up to the board, in terms of either waiving, modifying the SALDO request, and/or accepting the fees in lieu of that. So this would eliminate the, at least, put a policy out there, developers now know that this policy is in place. I think we'll get some pencils sharpened a little bit better when they submit plans and ask for waivers. And it does provide a, you know, acceptable funding source when you grant these modifications. My question always is, with a developer that's seeking major modifications, they have to make an argument to meet the statute, but my question always is, okay, if the board grants us, what's the good news for the Radnor Township residents? Is there some, you know, benefit to the Radnor residents, and this is the benefit, that you can negotiate and use these funds anywhere on the township? They're not restricted, wouldn't be restricted to this particular site.
So I'll quickly say something in favor of this. I'll echo all of John's sentiments, which I think are extremely well-taken, and I'll also point out the fact that we get a lot of developers coming to us, asking for waivers, knowing full well that whatever they ask for, we're likely, at some point, maybe not in the first go-round, but eventually to give them some, some fraction of what it is that they are asking for. And I, I have seen, over the course of the past three years or so, that they ask for a lot of things, and it's tough to say no, and a lot of the time, it's because it's things that we don't really need or want. And the most recent example was, the size of the plan gets decreased a little bit, which is kind of a silly waiver to ask for, I guess, but it doesn't really cost the township anything. But it saves money for the applicant. The applicant gets something every time. And frankly, I'd kind of like to put something in place to disincentivize the ask-for-the-world-and-you'll-get-whatever-you-get mentality that we sometimes have. So, on the one hand, I very much like the idea of ensuring that we get value for the residents. On the other hand, I hope that we can get more realistic waiver applications going forward. This in no way changes any applicant rights. They have an absolute right to a buy-ride plan, as they always have. They have an absolute right to certain waivers that meet the requirements of the statute. If the board decides not to grant waivers, they're always free to take an appeal, and perhaps someday will be proved wrong. But for the moment, we're staying within the confines of the law, and I think that we have an obligation to do what's best for the residents in this instance, not the applicants.
I'd like to say-
Hold on, Rich, before you go, because I know you're gonna go, and Jake. I just want to clarify one thing. When you say significant, and I'm in favor of this, too, I think the township, I do agree with Jack, we leave way too much stuff on the table, and I've been a big proponent of this. As many of you know, and I've been very outspoken about several, several institutions that, that develop land have been not paying their fair share. Now, when you say the word significant land, or significant waivers, do you mean, I guess, what's the definition of significant? In value, in, you know, a large number, 17 or 20, or, just, can you just clarify that term? Because, because I know what my colleagues are gonna say, that the, that it's gonna make it seem that, you know, the township is for sale for a price, and that's not the case, and I want you to clarify that. Thanks.
Well, there-
It is the case.
Your subdivision ordinance has a lot of administrative and drafting requirements for somebody that submits a plan, such as the size of the plan, the requirement that you show every feature within 500 feet of the site. To me, they're not significant. There might be a reason to require an applicant to do that, but you're built out in this community. You know, it's not as if you have vacant land. So you know where the buildings are, you know where the utility lines are. We have plenty of documentation regarding that. An example of something that I would consider significant is a developer that comes in and wants to put a sidewalk only on one side of a new road, because it'll save 50 grand. Sidewalk and curb, but leave the other side just a curb. And let's say it saves 20, 30, 40, $50,000. Well, I mean, I like sidewalks on both sides of the road, depending on, on the traffic patterns. And that would be a significant ask from a developer to waive that length of sidewalk. Steve could put a number on that. You know, it could be road widening, same thing. That, to me, would be significant. A public improvement that because of, let's say, the steepness of the land that the property fronts on, or some other, you have heritage trees all along that road frontage, and you don't want to tear them out to put in a sidewalk, you want to leave them there, or you have a stormwater problem. So some of these waivers make some sense, but, I mean, they are, they would be significant, that have some value to the township, or-
Follow-up. So, that's for sidewalk, I get it. And how about non-monetary issues? As Jack, President Larkin said, font size, correct? We're gonna give it to them anyway? Can we char, I mean, and I'm not saying that I want to gouge people, you know, we want Radnor to be a good place to do business, but where does, you know, where does that lie?
I think basically what-
Where's the median right there?
What, what most municipalities do, look at significant waivers, Sean, is road widening, curb, sidewalk, you know, stormwater management, sanitary sewer, traffic signals. I mean, you may have, I mean, I've seen this more, more times than I want to admit, but developer doesn't want to do full road improvements. Township doesn't want full road improvements for whatever reason, but there's a traffic signal a half a mile away that you're trying to cobble together funding for. Well, that developer, even though it's not, he's not required to do anything, because it's not on his property, can contribute to that traffic signal. You know, that sort of, it's, it's another public improvement that's not at this particular property, but the township needs funding, doesn't have funding, and the money can be set aside for something like that. So, they're the significant things. I don't think plan size are significant unless Steve has an engineering reason why you would want to make somebody identify, you know, every pipe, every electrical line, every telephone pole-
No, sir.
-within 500 feet of a site. That's just unnecessary work.
And I know, I mean, Steve, you're, you're comfortable with this.
Yes, sir. I, just to agree with what the solicitor put forth and the chairman did. This is an objective way to allow the township to benefit from waiver requests that are usually, and most of the time, only to the benefit of the developer. Sometimes they may claim a hardship, but oftentimes it is just to the benefit of the developer, as Mr. Rice said. So I do also agree that if there's a monetary value put to that waiver, developer's gonna think twice about requesting it. And as John said, I think we're gonna get, it could lead to more compliant plans, because if they're gonna have to pay for it, basically, if they're gonna have to pay the equivalent of the waiver, they might just say, "We might as well just comply and move forward with less waiver requests." That's just one of the reasons, but I think it's an important one.
My issue is not with the front end of this. My issue is with the, with the back end of this, of this resolution, and specifically, the need, the deep need, to develop the specific language around what the capital improvement fund constitutes, what it's gonna be used for, what it's not gonna be used for, all of the language that we've talked about, in terms of the township accepting gifts, AKA Penn Medicine, and putting the proper guidelines in place for how that is used, so that there is no debate, there is no waiver room, there is no wiggle, and there is no debate here until 1 o'clock in the morning as to what that capital fund was intended to do. I think that that is very important, and it is the only way to avoid the appearance of the quid pro quo, which I don't believe that this is, but we, as commissioners, will put ourselves and future commissioners at deep risk if we don't have proper language around that and how that is to be used.
And to add on to that comment, I also think that a project, you know, if there's a project proposed in a specific area, and this passes, and people are allowed to pay for, to get their waivers approved, or not to have to have a waiver, those, those funds should be set aside for projects in that, in that ward or that area. So you shouldn't be able to come in, pay 15, $20,000, and then have, you know, five members, four members of this board say, you know, "Nothing goes back into that neighborhood, we're gonna take it and put it in our neighborhood." That's just not right. Where do, where do the residents that are in that area of the project, where do they get any benefit?
Actually, to that point, a couple of things. Damian, I think you make a good point. Lisa's already started working on language around receiving gifts of any kind, and I think we need to do some work on that. And so I, I don't know if we would want to pass this resolution today and continue that work, or do it all-in-one. I'd like to hear from you and, and other commissioners on that. And then, to the point you made, Commissioner Abel, I was, I would like to see that there would be some discussion about, you know, what needs funding at what time, and if there's a source in a capital fund, but to try to tie it back to where it came in, in order for it to go out. I think, I envision sort of discussions around what's the greatest need in the community, and where are we lacking funding, and what wasn't in a bond, and what doesn't have other opportunities for funding. So I wouldn't want to restrict it to that, in one neighborhood, out to that neighborhood, but have it more be a broader conversation. So I guess I would like to not see that fund restricted to that extent, but maybe there are some ways, when we're talking about the, the gift agreements and what the intentions for the monies are, it could be fleshed out there.
This, this is, this is appalling. This is nothing less than the codification of corruption. This will only encourage the payments for the breach of the, of our ordinances, our laws. If we have a situation where we have something in our ordinance or a SALDO where we don't need it, we should take it out. If we don't want to require 24 by 36 plans, we should remove it. We should eliminate unnecessary regulation. We should streamline it. What we should not do is codify the corruption of accepting a gift, accepting a payment to waive portions of our laws. It is crazy. This is the nuttiest thing. This, this isn't necessary either, because we can negotiate any deal, and we have with any developer for anything we want them to do. We've done it many times, always poorly, I agree with that. However, we've done it many times. We don't need to openly say, "Radnor is for sale." That's what this does. Not only that, it's not clear what you can use it for, so it's gonna be a huge argument after the money comes in, and Jake, and Damian, and others, it's not gonna be clear how it's used or where it's used. it's used or where it's used. This is a very, very bad idea, and if this is passed, the majority is going to have to live with this for the rest of their life about how they instituted and codified corruption in Radnor.
So, the objection that I see is not by, at least by Mora, and by Commissioner Maroni and Commissioner Underly, is not so much that we have the fund, that it's not clearly defined, or that we have the fund?
So, I don't mind, because I think the fund is, here, it's referred to as a capital improvement fund, which seems pretty straightforward.
So you just don't like some of the language in it?
No, I think what I'm concerned about is when gifts are accepted, maybe outside of negotiating around zoning, but just any time that we're talking about bringing money into the township, I think it needs to be clear. You know, you sort of need to, we ran into it before. What was the intention of the dollars? What did the person giving the money think was going to happen to it?
And I understand. So you're not necessarily against it, you just don't like-
No, no, I'm not against it at all.
Okay, then, then let's, John, could you make some revisions to this, or not?
So, could I?
I mean, I'm just saying, maybe we should table it, because I think that, I'm going to listen to you, but maybe it should be, and I'll let you speak, obviously, but maybe, and I won't make the motion now that it'd be-
Thanks, because I think I'm the only one that hasn't had a chance to speak.
Yeah, no, no, I know, and that's why I'm saying I won't make it now. But it sounds that there is an appetite, and maybe it just needs to be perfected a little bit more, and maybe it makes best, so it doesn't get voted down, that eventually this is tabled, I'm not making that motion now, so some of the language is better and more digestible, at least. Madam Vice President, you can speak now.
So I was just going to say, to Moore's concern, Commissioner Maroni, to your concern about, I think there needs to be, and perhaps, Mr. Rice, you can help us with this, the difference between the acceptance of a gift from, say, a business that's already established here, they're not coming before us with any land development plan or anything like that, but they want to make a gift, and we, as a township, accept that gift. There, so, Commissioner Maroni and I have talked about this, we kind of live in this world of fundraising and gift acceptance policies and things like that. So, I had done some research, I've done some research around this, I've given her something just to kind of look at, around being able to more clearly define if a company is giving us a gift or something like that, and how we would go about deciding where that would get used, and how it would be accepted, and how the person would get thanked, and, I mean, there's a lot of pieces around that. But this, I think, is very different. You know, I honestly, I don't see this as corruption, but what I do see is perhaps opportunities for there to be a win-win for the township and for a developer. I do agree that we do have developers that come before us, we had one already this evening, with plans with all kinds of waivers, and thinking like, "Oh, I will just get all these waivers." Those are not the, those are not the plans, and those are not, and obviously, I think staff would not bring that forward, those are not the types of plans that would, this would fall under, but certainly, things that are smaller, or things that help create a convenience, you know, for the developer, and then how can the township benefit? You know, we've had, and Commissioner Booker, I agree with you, since I've been on this board, we've done some negotiating, we've done some things, we've gotten some sidewalks, we got the one in front of the Legion for that one project that's currently in process. I think there have been some other things. But then there are some other things, like we've got that sign that says Bentley Homes on it. You know, are those the things that we want to be doing? But no, if we have, if we get money and we put it in a fund for, that is specifically defined for capital improvements, and maybe we do want to more clearly define where we want that money to go, and how we decide, I do agree with Commissioner Maroni, I don't think it should be, you know, it came into this neighborhood and should go out into that same neighborhood. I'm looking at our unfunded capital project list, which, if you look at what our presentation was for our budget in 2020, when we decided on that, it specifically says, "No new projects funded." We have over $7.2 million, and give or take, because we did take some projects off when we did the bond, 7.2, 7.3 million dollars of unfunded projects just in 2020. And this goes out to 2024. There's 28,762,870. Again, give or take, because we did fund $7 million worth of projects out of the bond last year. So, we have a lot of capital projects with no funding, and some of these are important, and they touch every piece of the township, including this building, including our Public Works building, things that we just don't have the money for. So, you know, if we can craft this in a way that it is not only a benefit to the developers for the job, things that they want to try to get done, and for the township, without sacrificing the, you know, the integrity of our ordinances, and the things that we hold important to, as a community, to the community development, and I think that we can straddle that line. And I think that this would be good. I'm willing to consider tabling it, if somebody would like to do that. And then, perhaps, we could get some more commissioner input into how we would revise it and make it more acceptable.
I'll make a motion to table.
Second-
Well, let's just-
Is a motion to table on the floor?
No, I have a couple more questions.
All in favor, say aye.
I'm going to, I'm going to-
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, say nay.
I mean, nay.
Motion passes four to three. Let's bring this back to the next meeting. In the meantime, John, I'd be grateful if you could work with the various commissioners who raised issues about the specific items they've asked, and we can have some additional language.
Please give me feedback.
Otherwise, he can't do anything. So guys, reach out to John. John, if you don't hear anything, send a nudge.
Well, Mr. President, two comments.
Yeah.
One, why don't we send this, I mean, why doesn't this be referred to Carfac, and have them take a look at it and provide comment and feedback to us? And two, just a, you know, process and formalities, members of the commissioners up on the dais should not be referring to companies or residents by name in our comments, especially when they're not here to get up and defend themselves.
I don't have a problem with that.
Just real quick, John, if you do redo this, you should do a separate policy for gifts and a separate policy for waivers.
Oh, no, it has to, they need to be separate.
Okay.
And I've talked to Commissioner Maroni about the gift policy, and I know that lawyer's been working on it, and Lisa's been working on it. That's a totally separate resolution that would come back for gifts. These are not gifts. You know, these are fees in lieu of that are permitted, you know, whether you do them informally, or whether you do them with a written resolution and you have full transparency. You can call it what you want, Rich, but it's the same thing.
Corrupt.
Well, I disagree with that. It's authorized-
This is coming back in a month, we can fight over it then. And we can send it to Carfac then as well, if that's the will of the majority. Item four, reports of standing committees of the board, do we have any?
The Community Development Subcommittee had two meetings. We met and we talked about the generator ordinance, and we provided feedback for Kevin, which we expect to see something come back, as well as the fence ordinance, which we decided should not come back. We also discussed the 108 West Wayne Avenue proposal, and we also discussed the possibility of implementation of a new Radnor Historical Commission, and that is something that I would like to bring before the board at a later date, which would be a commission that would talk and identify historical properties all over the township, not just in the Harb, not just at Luella, and that would be of aid in maintaining and saving some of the historic properties in Radnor that otherwise may be demolished without a second look. So, I'll be, I'd like to bring that back, maybe in August and maybe September.
Can I just, I'll touch up on that real quick. So I hear what you're saying, and I agree with you. Just as a follow-up, we're looking for members for Harb, which is a Historic Architecture Review Board, and actually went to one of the meetings, and so anyone that's interested in helping preserve the history in Radnor and the old buildings, my old house on Lowry's Lane was actually a carriage house, they picked it up, and they, it was on the railroad, and they picked it up and they moved it to a different place. So, from the 1820s, I believe, it's a cornerstone on the other side of the twin. So, I agree. So, anyway, I'll just throw that out there, because I knew that I was going to do that.
Thank you.
If anyone is interested in some of our committees, especially Harb, I know that they're looking for two members.
Are you finished, Rich? Okay. I would just like to welcome Joyce Plathfoot, she is the new executive director of the library. She joins the township from Leddington Library. She starts tomorrow, so that'll be exciting.
Do we have any new business? Moving to old business, do you want to go first?
So I just, I know, Mr. Rice, you'll be, we'll be bringing forward something around the noise ordinance for our next, for our August meeting, first August meeting. So anyone who's interested in that, I've heard from a lot of residents since we brought that up at the last meeting. So, I know people are interested in that, and that's around construction, making some amendments to the timing for that. The other thing, and I think Commissioner Farhi actually touched on it when we were speaking earlier about the Roberts Road project, our stormwater, and I know that Mr. White isn't here right now, but we, I think we need to get back to talking about stormwater, the stormwater projects and how we fund them. We have that on our list from, at the end of last year, that we were going to talk about stormwater projects, we were going to talk about funding. I know there's a lot of other things around that we need to be concerned about around budget, but I think that stormwater needs to be, needs to be a discussion that's back in the forefront, and the list of many projects that we have that are stormwater-related, we need to be taking a look at that, and I think we need to start to prioritize some of those projects and figure out how we're going to, how we're going to fund those, and the new reality that we may be facing with regards to budget for next year. But I think that that's something I would request we start to look at.
So you mean just the projects, not looking at the stormwater ordinance and modifying the ordinance?
I don't know that we need to modify the stormwater ordinance, but I, I'm talking about the projects and the funding of that. We did have that on our list at the end of last year, we would start to look at those projects.
Steve, how close are we to getting West Wayne Preserve before the board?
So Commissioner, the testing should be back in a few weeks, so I would hope to go over the final product with you, maybe September, and then we could meet with residents and the board. So I would say, late fall.
Good, thank you.
Mr. Brosman, you requested the opportunity to give us a presentation. It falls under old business, so the floor is yours.
Thank you for that. Commissioner Larkin, I have a flash drive of the presentation that we presented to the Community Development Committee. Would someone be able to tell me how to hook that up? I plug it in here, and we'll go more briefly.
Plug it into the computer there, and we're going to see if we can get the screens up for you.
Folks, is there, is there any ETA on when we're going to have our monitors back? I don't know who handles that. Bob Tate, Bill White, Steve Norsini? These have been out for months. Is something, can we do, do we need new monitors? What do we need to get monitors, so we can see what's on TV?
And I will find out, Commissioner, I do not know.
With these, with these things, it makes it very difficult to see the screens, and really want to have the monitors back.
I'm here this evening with the principals of my client, who's Eli Khan, who's behind me, and Wade McDevitt, who is a Radnor Township resident. I believe he resides in Commissioner Abel's ward. Thank you for this opportunity. We went through this at the Community Development Committee, we'll try to do a brief version of that here this evening. I'm going to, I'll tell you a couple things that have happened since the last meeting. We were scheduled to be on the zoning hearing board agenda for Thursday night, this coming Thursday night. It was brought to my attention that the advertisement for that hearing had a typographical error and some of the relief being sought. So I'm going to be sending a letter to the zoning hearing board, to Mr. Kachansky and the zoning hearing board solicitor, asking to postpone that meeting and to re-advertise that. So, we will not be proceeding this Thursday. I expect the zoning board will agree that the hearing should be re-advertised. I don't have a future date for that. So that does give us a little more time, maybe for you to digest this. I'll go over the relief that we're seeking, but I would like Eli and/or Wade to briefly run you through the project that they would like to do.
Thank you, commissioners. I'll try to be brief. Last year, Wade and I purchased the former post office annex at 108 West Wayne Avenue. The building was constructed in 1961. It has been, it had been continuously operated as a industrial use, a sorting facility for the US post office, under the terms of a 55-year lease. That lease expired in 2006. Wade and I are both local. Wade is a kind of almost world-renowned retail specialist in retail real estate. We thought this building would make a great conversion into an office building. We are proposing a one-story addition to the building. All of you know where the building is located, west, South Wayne Avenue, West Wayne Avenue, it actually has a West Wayne Avenue address, even though there's really no formal entrance on West Wayne Avenue. There is a loading area, a large asphalt area, fronting on South Wayne Avenue. That area consisted of approximately six parking spaces when the building was built in 1961, and three loading docks that go to a loading dock platform where trucks would back in off of South Wayne Avenue into those truck bays. This is what the building looks like from West Wayne Avenue. The library is on your right. It's a single-story, industrial-style building with all brick, with large industrial-style windows. A few renderings we're going to show you, and I'm trying to blow through this quickly. This is proposing to put a second story onto the building and convert the entire building into a Class A office building, to take advantage of the amenities of Wayne, the walkable amenities of Wayne for office employees, and public transportation, obviously, the train and bus transportation. Highly desirable, even in a post-COVID environment, for office tenants to be in a walkable environment with public transportation. This is the large loading area that you're looking at. Again, the post office is to the right, there's a physical connection that's owned by the post office that connects to 108 West Wayne Avenue, and that physical connection will remain. This is a zero-lot-line development that at some point Radnor Township approved and will remain. The loading dock doors that are part of the post office, this postal, post office connection will remain. The loading, the existing loading dock into the sorting facility is right here where the cursor is. We're proposing to take this parking lot and go from six parking spaces to 14 parking spaces. This is the view looking over, proposed view, looking over from South Wayne Avenue, looking west, to the two-story addition. We're proposing a setback from the post office on the second floor to have a green terrace and deck. We're proposing greenery in the front of the building where the old loading docks were. The main entrance would be in what is now a large white door, which is a drive-in door. That would be the main entrance with the lobby, elevator, and stair towers. We're proposing, this rendering doesn't show it, but this little strip right here will be green, and we're proposing to add green strip along South Wayne Avenue, west of the sidewalk. This is a proposed floor plan of the building, and again, I don't want to get too deep into these, because I appreciate the time to talk- these because I appreciate the time to talk through this. The total gross floor area of the building is just short of 19,000 square feet. We are seeking two waivers, and George will get into more of the specifics of that, but I want to talk briefly about what's happening right now in Wayne. Downtown Wayne is in a crisis. Right now, today, there's about 40,000 square feet of vacant retail on Route 30, combination of Route 30 and North Wayne Avenue. Downtown Wayne has never experienced anything like this. It started pre-COVID, and only four months into COVID, we're looking at 40,000 square feet of vacant retail space. Some of the prominent names in retail have left Wayne, and we're just at the beginning. Your ordinance requires in this zoning district that the first floor of the building be retail, if there is to be a second floor. We see no, no viability for retail at this location. As you saw in the rendering, the build, most of the building is behind the post office and actually is encumbered by this loading dock connection that will remain. The building sits way back from South Wayne Avenue, and there's just no demand for retail. So to require it might have made sense when the ordinance was established, and you know, maybe it did, but it certainly doesn't now.
So I'm going to jump in and pause you for a second. We've been going for a little while, and I think we should probably open it up to the Commissioners asking questions directly, because I think that we get with your, you telling us about the waivers that you're requesting. I had mentioned to you outside, and I'll tell you again now, I have real concerns about going one-off with respect to what the WBOD should and should not require. I agree with you absolutely that we need to revisit what the WBOD does require, and I think we probably want to revisit what the extent of the WBOD includes. I'll tell you that it's my instinct that with respect to the office space, and I'm not going to speak for parking, that's probably something that one way or another you're probably going to end up getting. But it's my instinct that the better way to do that is not by one-off zoning amendment, zoning, oh my gosh, just laid it back, I'm blanking on the word.
Variance.
Thank you. This is what happens when we govern at 9:10 p.m., after a full day of actual work. But I'd like to loop you into the conversation with some other people who are, including the WBA and residents in the area, that we're going to be getting started in, like, literally the next week or two, about how we can get to something that satisfies the needs that you have specifically identified, while simultaneously not giving up the character of the WBOD. So that's not really a question, I know we should, I said we should open up to Commissioner questions, but I at least wanted to let you know that I have concerns about what it is you're talking about, but I think there's going to be a way to get where you want to go anyway. Is there any other Commissioner questions or comments?
What do you mean, there's going to be a way to get where you would need to go? What do you?
So Rich, before, when I was talking, I was saying things, and if you listened, you might have understood that I was saying I'd like to find a way to amend the WBOD, both inside.
You're a smacked ass, I tell you that. But you.
No, 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 Rich.
What are you, what are you, how are you proposing to get there? What are you, have a meeting with the WBOD and then, or the WBA and come up with what? What are you thinking of? What, what do you, what do you say?
So we have a zoning ordinance, which describes both the extent of the WBOD. We have a zoning map, and it also describes the restrictions that are in place within the WBOD. And I'm proposing that we should have a conversation with people who are residents in the area who use that space to walk to Wayne, to shop in Wayne. I'm also suggesting that we talk to the existing store owners who live and work there, many of whom have organized into the WBA, proposing that we speak with landlords in the area who derive rents from that space. We talked to a number of applicants, including this one, who are looking to make changes on a one-by-one basis, and instead of doing that one-off, by one-off, we think about a new holistic plan for that area, which I think that the definition of retail has changed in important ways. Things that we, when the WBOD was drafted, were not considered retail, really are in the nature of retail today. Simultaneously, we have a lot of Class C office space in the township, and in the WBOD in particular, tends to be on second stories, for exactly the reason that you identified. I think the Class C office space is going the way of the dinosaur. People are going to work from home or they're going to work in Class A office space. There's not going to be a lot of people who, you can't see the front of their stores, you can't access it unless you walk through a bar to get up there or whatever else. So that's my initial thoughts. I suspect that other people are going to have other ideas, but yeah, that's, that's what I have in mind. You're shaking your head, that's fun.
They have a specific requirement, request, that's what it is, and we know they want specific things, and you said we're going to get there, and then you say we're going to have meetings. So if you, if you have an idea on how to get there, I was asking for that, not for flippant disrespectful responses, but, so thank you.
It must be fun for you, sorry. Is there any other Commissioner comment? Hearing none, since this is.
Well, I got a. Go ahead, Moore, please. Thank you. I was at your last presentation, so I saw a little bit deeper, and we had a long conversation about parking and, but what I liked, and maybe you could share with the Commissioners, is the number of people who would be occupying this building, who would then be using the restaurants and the other businesses in Wayne. I think, you know, if you can talk a little bit about the size of the building, how many occupants would be there.
Sure. So right now, your ordinance for an industrial building, to reoccupy, to reoccupy this building industrially would require about 62 parking spaces, is what your ordinance requires. In itself, that is a little crazy for an industrial use relative to the rest of the Delaware Valley. Our traffic study presents that this building will require about 40 to 42 parking spaces. We're proposing 14 on-site, which leaves us short by about 28 parking spaces. We're proposing to pay the township either by way of purchasing the new cards that are available, the parking cards or parking passes, or strike some other lease deal to lease a certain number of spaces in the, in the public lots that are available. In order to try to see a harmonious Wayne, the people that will work in this building will shop and dine and bank and travel through North Wayne Avenue and provide customers for that area, as opposed to further diluting the retail base, which is what we were really talking about the other night. There is really no parking problem. We have a parking study in this area. An office use is Monday through Friday generally, you know, seven in the morning to five or six at night. Wayne's parking problem is happy hour and beyond, probably Thursday, Friday, Saturday night, when there's no parking demand from this building. This building had, according to the postmaster, Joe Nugent, had 55 people working in it when it was last occupied by the post office. Those people parked somewhere in Wayne. They didn't pay for it unless they put meter parking in. We're proposing to kind of use a little bit less space than that, less parking spaces than, and actually pay for it, and provide a building that adds fuel to the retail and service businesses of North Wayne Avenue and Lancaster Avenue, as opposed to diluting it. And Mr. Larkin, I totally appreciate the idea of a rezoning. My history tells me that those things take a long time, and I think this is a classic variance case. We can make a case for the parking, and George can talk more legally about that and let the zoning hearing board decide that, as well as the case for, for the office use as opposed to a retail use. And it is, it is, if the zoning hearing board doesn't agree with us, then we will be back here trying to seek a zoning change or modifications, do that, or come up with some other use for the building. What we really didn't want to have happen was, and you're, the only time you guys discussed this collectively, you discussed sending your solicitor to the zoning hearing board to object to these two variances, or I don't know if you formally voted, but you kind of collectively agreed to. We're just asking you, let us kind of run this course with your zoning hearing board, which is what it's there for, and not take a negative position on this issue, these two issues with this project. Zoning hearing boards have a tough time going against Commissioners who send their attorney to say no, whether we have a legal argument or not. This is not a prime retail area of Wayne. There are a couple of retail businesses across the street, but they're nominal. Given the crisis that's coming down the road in retail and personal service across the world, this is something that the board really needs to focus on. On a global level, this is just a microcosm of it. So we're really just, tonight, we really wanted to present it to you, so you formally heard what it's about, a little bit about what it's about, and try to convince you not to send your solicitor to the zoning hearing board, to object to it.
I didn't have the benefit, unfortunately, of hearing your last presentation. And once again, I will say unequivocally, as Solicitor Rice heard me several times in a phone conversation today, I know about, I know about as much on land use as I know about neurosurgery, which is nothing. But I've lived half of my life in South Wayne, within a five or six-block proximity to this building. In my memory, it's been a blight on the South Wayne community for most, if not all of those years. My interest is, you know, seeing that area improved, obviously. It's not in my ward, but it's right across the street from my ward. The parking issues that you bring up, I believe, are easily gotten around simply because, in my estimation, the type of businesses that would take space there would have people that are either walking to, taking the train. There would be a number of different people, and a lot of people, obviously, that are driving cars. But your points on what that would bring in these hard times to South Wayne, I think, is of interest as well. So there's a number of issues that will come up if you do decide to develop there and you do get approval in that area. And one that is obviously near and dear to my heart is the interaction with the fire company across the street, what it means in terms of construction and longer use in there, because it is, you know, as you know, a major thoroughfare for emergency vehicles. So I would urge you to reach out and start to have conversations in the process if it moves that way as early as possible, to make sure that the, the fire company and the operations there are included in terms of the planning. I just don't share the concerns in terms of, you know, the long-term with the parking and stuff, I think. But, you know, I understand the issues around the, the variances that would be needed. But I support President Larkin's thoughts and comments around what the future of Wayne and the, and the overlay district and the WBA looks like. I think it needs addressing sooner rather than later.
Thank you.
I think we have a very specific request from our guests, that we not put John Rice at the zoning board to go against their application.
Yes. Remind me, when is your zoning hearing board?
As I said earlier, it was to be Thursday, this coming Thursday, July 16th. Tomorrow, I'll be sending a letter asking for a continuance so that it could be re-advertised. I don't have a date yet. I did try to reach the zoning board solicitor today, so the date would be undetermined, but we were not ready to proceed on Thursday because of this advertising technical issue.
They usually meet on the third Thursday of the month.
So that'll give us an additional meeting before your next zoning hearing, before your next date.
We could reconsider again in August.
We would like to get on the zoning board as soon as possible. I know they don't usually meet in August, but, you know, there are tenants that are interested, I understand, and when do you all meet again?
August 10.
August, second week in August.
Right.
What is it, Peggy?
So we'll meet again before the third Thursday, which is the 20th.
We meet the 10th, August 10th.
So I'm going to suggest that we not vote on this now, obviously, if somebody wants to move, and there's a second, but I'd say that we come back, we can put this on the agenda next time, if that's the pleasure of the board, and we'll look at this again then.
This isn't really a vote, this is more consensus. So the question really should be, is has the consensus changed, correct? Because, I mean, I mean, was it a formal vote to send you, or was it consensus to send, to send John Rice? What was it?
Yeah, we generally do this by consensus.
Okay, so then, then we should just poll the board to see if there is consensus. So it's done, it's done on record, on camera, and everybody can see it. I mean, I know that I missed a lot of what you said, and I apologize, but I am somewhat versed in this. My consensus, I have not changed my opinion. I think that it's, on any major land development, we should be sending our solicitor. So for me, if this happens in August, September, or it gets pulled out until, I don't know, next January, from what I see, nothing's changed. So, so when it comes down to, to this, either we take consensus again, or we don't take consensus, but to say, let's wait and retake consensus, doesn't make much sense to me.
I could say, you know, sending a solicitor to observe is one thing, sending a solicitor to oppose is an entirely different thing, so.
I don't think we'd send a solicitor to observe. Why spend the money to do that?
I don't like to just observe, George, you know that.
Well, I was hearing the Commissioner say that he thought it was maybe a good policy to send a solicitor for major land developments, and I wouldn't assume you would oppose all of them.
Well, I, I, yeah, to send, we're not sending to, you know, for him to, we're not going to pay you just to drive down from wherever you are to sit there and, you know, come here for the free drinks and, and free food. You're here to, to either appeal and to fight it or not. So again, getting back to the point, what I was saying, I guess you can't make, you can't make a motion to have a consensus, but I think that's where we are right now.
Well, I would say, this is a very specific request that the applicant's making. I am all for having the applicant meet and get a consensus with the neighbors and the neighborhood. I think the real problem with this whole development is, is that it went from the planning commission straight to the zoning hearing board, and the plan was never to bring it to the Board of Commissioners. And when that happened, you saw how the board voted, which is, why would the board give a waiver for 45 parking spots? It requires 61, you should have 61. So you need to develop that more. I would agree, if we, if Commissioner Larkin wants us to get the consensus right now, my consensus will be, send the solicitor to oppose. Hasn't changed. But if there is a movement, as Jack says, to meet with the, and to talk about the zoning and to, and to make it really work, you know, I would be happy to give the opportunity to try to do that.
Yeah, I'd like you guys to talk to some of the residents, and I'd like to pause on this. I'll be honest with you, my, my vote has not changed, my consensus has not changed from last time, but I see an opportunity for you guys to change my mind. I am excited about seeing that building be redeveloped. I want to find a way for you to do it. But, but we have time before your ZHB hearing, and so I suggest that we take advantage of it.
Can you slate us, or slate us for a placeholder on the next agenda?
Yeah, we'll do that.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there any additional old business? Closing public participation. Hearing none, I will move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.